Director Bennerott, we'll keep going here momentarily as soon as we get a green light. Okay, very good. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Edina City Council meeting. We are in City Council chambers. It is Tuesday, August 15, 2023, 7:02 PM. Thanks for joining us on a beautiful Minnesota summer evening. And August is rolling right along from a time standpoint, too. So I'm going to do something that's a little bit redundant to what Director Bennerott just talked about because we're now on television. And we're doing these meetings in a hybrid fashion during COVID and post-COVID, at least for a foreseeable future. We'll be conducting these meetings both in a hybrid way, in person, and on a variety of different ways you can watch in the virtual world, cable TV, edinamn.gov live meetings, facebook.com, all those different ways that you could participate or at least observe the city council meeting. If you want to participate in community comment tonight or in any of the two public hearings that we've got this evening, there's your number to call. And if you're going to call on community comment, you should get that number written down and the PIN number. And when you call in, press star one to speak to an operator, and the operator will bring you into Director Bennerott, who will bring you into the council. So having provided that information, let's call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the role of the council.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Rissler?
Here.
Mayor Havelin?
Here. Next is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. And now we've got a meeting agenda. Is there anyone on the council or from a staff standpoint that wishes to modify the agenda in any way? We're hearing nothing. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. We've got a motion by Member Agnew, a second by Member Jackson to approve the meeting agenda in its published form. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. Now we are back at community comment, folks. So get ready if you're in the virtual world watching in and you want to call in on a matter that's of concern to you, that's not on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. But first, we're going to turn to our neighbors in the audience and see if anyone that's attending the council meeting tonight wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them, as I mentioned, that's not on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing. So one of our residents is coming forward now as I'm completing that comment. So welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. My name is Ralph Zickert. I live at 4311 Cornelius Circle. Earlier this evening, staff shared their progress report for Phase Two of the Clean Water Strategy Project. Shameful is the one word for it. Yes, Mr. Neal, shameful. Unfortunately, it's yet another example of the shoddy work that finds its way to the council chambers. And for a project that was supposed to be done in 2019, it's four years past due. Shameful from the start. Phase One of the project, completed in mid-2022, benchmarked four cities in their practices. Staff chose the four cities based on size of the city. How size of the city makes for a good benchmark, I don't know. A thought shared more fully on Better Together Edina. Shameful for the product shared tonight. The work session presentation by staff was the second draft of Phase Two and the first time the public input was solicited. Unfortunately, staff chose to ignore or completely discount feedback regarding the priority matrix by two lake associations. Both the Lake Cornelius and Lake Nancy Lake Associations take exception to staff ignoring, one, the importance of a water body to stormwater and flood management, and, two, ignoring the size of the watershed served by the water body. Both issues, both are issues that, in our opinion, are of importance to the greater community, way, way beyond the size of the water body itself. We also take exception to staff's contention that it's too difficult to incorporate the interconnectedness of water bodies into the matrix. I would have thought that a group responsible for our city sewer systems would have grasped the concept that stuff flows downhill. But maybe the real challenge is that staff sees all criteria on the priority matrix as having the same importance, judged as either a yes or a no basis. We contend that not all criteria is equal, a point recognized by both the current matrix and anyone who has drafted a credible priority matrix. Again, go to Better Together Edina to see a more complete presentation of our concerns. Edina deserves better. Minnesota deserves better.
Thank you, Mr. Zickert. Did you want to leave your written remarks with the clerk or do you?
I have them recorded.
Yeah, we got them recorded. But sometimes you like to, you know, people like to leave their written statements as well. No question, it's recorded. Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them?
Good evening. My name is Nora Davis, and I live at 6921 South Dale Road in the Lake Cornelius area, directly adjacent to the 4040 site. As you probably know, I'm also the contact person for the Lake Cornelius Neighborhood Association, and the last two years have been very difficult for our neighborhood. Neighbors have been reaching out to me with a variety of concerns, everything from traffic to congestion to airplane noise. And neighbors now wonder why they can't take a walk around Lake Cornelius. I kept sending them all those warnings. And who can forget the fire station episode? I send so many emails, warnings, and alerts that Google thinks I'm a spammer, and they've warned me. Crime has now become an area, a serious problem in our area. Vehicles have been ransacked along South Dale Road, and hybrid Lily stolen from Arnison Acres. And it wasn't that long ago that I'm looking out my front window in a silver sedan, they all seem to be silver sedan, pull up in front of my home. Young man gets out, and I just assumed he was going to deliver something. He walked around, opened his trunk, took out a screwdriver, took off the license plate, threw it in the trunk, and off he went. And at first, I couldn't believe what I was seeing. I just thought, oh, my God, you know, and off he went. But it was kind of a frightening episode to think that happens in broad daylight right in front of your home. And a few days ago, unfortunately, we're now seeing panhandlers in the area. And a few days ago, I was heading east on 70th toward York, you know, by Target, and there's a panhandler standing right in the median, which is like two feet wide. And of course, he's got the sign, and everybody was, you know, whizzing past him going east and west. And all of a sudden, the light changed, and there I was practically next to him. And it was really an uncomfortable feeling because he's kind of eyeing me. Fortunately, the light changed, but that's just not a comfortable feeling. And development has also become a really big concern. As one neighbor put it, I see more and more concrete being poured with trees and green space removed. We've become an urban heat island. Dust is in the air, streets are closed, and trees are dying. I've been a longtime resident of Edina, and I remember the conversations when all this development started. Everything was going to be wonderful. We were going to collect lots of taxes. All services were going to be paid for. That wasn't going to be an issue. Our taxes were going to go down, and the lights were going to stay on. And unfortunately, that hasn't happened. Taxes continue to go up. And at the last meeting of both the council and the HRA, I heard talk about loaning millions of dollars to developers. And I worry that the city is going to become the go-to financier, kind of like the Bank of Edina, and that makes me very uncomfortable. And I also heard about the utility franchise fees. And when I first heard about those fees, I assumed the utility was going to pay them because it says utility franchise fees. And I thought, well, good, it's about time they start doing something. But I don't think most citizens understand that those fees roll down to them. So I think a more honest name would be a utility user tax. And I think people that aren't using huge amounts of electricity or gas should pay less because they're working harder and they need to be applauded.
Ms. Davis, I need to get you to wrap up. I've let you drift over the screen.
I am. My last two sentences. Number one, I appreciate.
I know you've got a lot on your mind, but.
Yeah. I appreciate being here tonight. It is so quiet here. They're ripping up Valley View Road behind our home, and there's a giant, I don't know what it is, but incredibly noisy, and the dust and the dirt and everything flying through the neighborhood. And as I left, a neighbor notified me there had been a high-speed chase in the neighborhood with crashes and trees going down. So life in our Lake Cornelius neighborhood continues to be most interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Golden. I live at 6566 France Avenue South, Edina. Back on July 27, I sent a note to Mayor Havelin that I'd noticed an increase in the number of panhandlers in the city of Edina. And Mayor Havelin responded back to me very quickly and answered my inquiry and stated that he had noticed the same. He copied Chief Milburn, as well as City Manager Neal, and stated that either City Manager Neal or Chief Milburn would get back to me with response. And August 3, City Manager Neal responded to my inquiry and stated that there has been a number of Edina residents that have surfaced the same concern. City Manager Neal also stated that, as it's being practiced in and around our streets and freeways, entrances and exits, it's not illegal as long as those engaged in the practice are not obstructing traffic or making it unsafe for drivers or pedestrians. In addition, Tannupon County prosecutors have made it clear to law enforcement that panhandlers should not be arrested or detained if the action is not causing harm. Makes total sense to me, and I totally understand. However, I'm having difficulty understanding how safety is being managed on our streets and medians. Number one, many times I see families camped out at intersections with small children. It's not safe for children at these busy intersections. These children are not always in strollers or juvenile seats, and I've seen them walking in the grass of the medians. Number two, not safe for the panhandlers as these are busy intersections. On a couple of occasions, I've seen panhandlers jot around lanes of traffic to get donations. And while they're getting back to their respective waiting areas, traffic has already commenced moving. Number three, it's not safe for drivers from a security standpoint. And I bring up this point primarily from the increase of carjackings for the past three years. Rolling down a window is probably not the smartest thing to do. While I'm sympathetic to the panhandlers, there is a risk to the motorists. With that being said, and noting that it is legal to panhandler activity, I'm inquiring this evening and asking if the council can evaluate which street corners are safe for children and panhandlers so that they can conduct their business without the worry of being hit by a speeding car at an intersection that already is known for heavy traffic volumes in unsafe conditions. Should panhandlers be regulated in the municipality of Edina with either a permit or a license to panhandle? I'm sure that most panhandlers don't understand the workings of the municipality of Edina, and most likely, panhandlers won't want to get involved in getting a permit to panhandle. And on the flip side, I'm guessing that the city of Edina probably doesn't want to manage permits for panhandling either. But such a practice would diminish the activity and increase safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golden.
Good evening. Janie Weston, 6136 Burkeview Avenue. Seeing in the news what has been, what happened to Lahaina, Hawaii, brings to mind concerns on a local level here. I live half a block away from the south end of Pamela Park, and there are kids shooting off fireworks there on a pretty regular basis. I've seen teenage boys, haven't seen the girls doing it, but I've been seeing the boys, arriving and shooting rockets with lots of sparks horizontally. This has happened more than once. Another neighbor at the other end of the park had, last year, saw the same thing, and then they turned and shot fireworks at her. Every few nights, I hear midnight, 1:00, 2:00 AM, a huge boom or rockets going off in Pamela Park. I assume they're in Pamela Park because they come from that direction. And I'm concerned, well, for one, we don't like the noise. It scares the little kids on our street. Dogs don't like it. It wakes me up, too. But we're in the third year of a drought. And yes, we did have a wonderful, almost two inches of rain this last weekend. However, we could have maybe not a drop again, and high temperatures are predicted again. Many trees are extremely dry. Grasses can become very dry very quickly again. And I am concerned, what does the city have for a plan if we have a wildfire that sweeps through part of the city? Tornado sirens aren't really quite what I would expect as far as how I would be warned, but people in Lahaina, they had less than a minute to try and get out of their houses if they survived. And high winds like that, which are not unheard of here, combined with fireworks or someone having a, you know, fire pit in their yard that gets away from them, it concerns me. So I'm just curious. I'd like to know. And I thought this would be a place to bring it up so public can be better informed. What is the city's plan if we have a wildfire start that can move quickly? How will residents be informed? So, thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Ms. Weston. Anyone else in the audience?
Good evening. My name is Joe Kavanaugh, and I'm the founder and CEO of Youth Frontiers. We're a 35-year-old organization that's headquartered in Edina. I'm speaking tonight not as the CEO of Youth Frontiers, but as a member of the community, as a dad, and as an expert on youth. And in particular, what I want to be addressing is the crisis in mental health, the crisis in young people today. The data is overwhelming on it, if you believe in data. CDC just reported that 60% of young people today experience serious loneliness. Anxiety and depression is skyrocketing. The suicide rate has doubled in the last 10 years. I'm particularly addressing right now your opportunity in dealing with the cannabis law, the one, the accessibility as a business and the use in the public. If we, as a community, wanted to fuel and exasperate this crisis in young people, make marijuana more accessible and more normalized, and I'm not talking about adults right now, I'm talking about young people. And so what I'm doing very briefly is imploring you to restrict this drug to the fullest extent possible, both as a business and in public use. And I'm not saying it for us as adults. I'm saying it for our young people in this community and in our state. Please.
All right. Mr. Kavanaugh, we were going to have a public hearing on this matter later this evening, and so we'll just take your testimony as. And then would you give us your home address, too, please?
Yes, it's.
For the record?
4388 Brook Avenue, Edina, 55424.
All right. So we're not going to.
I should have waited.
We're not going to have you wait around until we get to the public hearing, but it's up to you. I mean, you can certainly come back up, but.
I don't need to. I think you hear my passion, happy to talk with you at another time on this issue, too.
Okay. And I think the, we heard this morning at Rotary that Edina Ed Fund or Give and Go, Ed Fund is having a fundraiser for, all the mental health professionals are going to be assisting the various elements of the school district, various schools in the school district.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
I think it's coming this coming Wednesday, so.
My particular concern is the accessibility and the normalization of cannabis in the community.
Yeah.
Parks, streets, and then the sale, so.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for coming over.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council? Okay, let's turn now to anybody that we have online that may want to.
I have a lonely operator. I have no callers for you yet this evening.
All right. I've gotten to the point where I can tell from that look on your face when you look up that there is or is not somebody there on the line. All right. Following community comment every meeting that we have, we have the city manager respond to community comments that were made at the prior meeting. So I'll turn now to Manager Neal to provide that information.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had four community commenters at our meeting last on August 2. The first was Kent Kramer from the, regarding the Lincoln Drive solemn development concerns in the Parkwood Knowles neighborhood. I think it's, while we have had some discussion along that line, we do not have an application for rezoning or redevelopment at that site, and we don't anticipate seeing one until well into 2024. So just a status check on that. We heard from Mandy Brown, who was concerned about a burglary spree over the previous weekend to that meeting. And Deputy Chief White, who was with us that night, addressed that later, later in the evening. We had concerns expressed by Janie Weston about the pyramid of discretion that we have used here for many years, that our previous city attorney, Roger Knutson, developed. And the League of Cities has also developed one that's somewhat like it. They have made some changes to theirs. We have not made changes to ours. And we think that that puts them a little bit out of sync. We are not, one of her concerns was, are we making it easier? Are we intentionally making it easier for people seeking variances to get variances from our zoning code? And we are not intentionally trying to do that. So that, I think that was important. There was also, she raised some questions about the drool and moose variance that was given by the Planning Commission. And I think Councilmember Rissler has some questions about that as well. And I think one of our ways we could address that is maybe just to brief you on that at a council meeting in a special presentation because there seems to be some more concern about that. Finally, the final call was from Daniel Eaton, also from the Parkwood Knowles neighborhood. And he raised some questions about how we handle our public comment and the protocol behind it. And Mayor, you addressed that right after his call and I think addressed it fully and from the standpoint of somebody who has been in this line of work for a long time and had, was instrumental in setting up the protocol that we have today. And that's all we have.
Member Rissler.
Just wanted to clarify, the pyramid of discretion that Edina is using, variances are on the very lowest part of the yellow region. There are three regions, green at the bottom, the broadest, yellow indicating to sort of slow down, and then red at the top. And the League of Minnesota Cities puts variances right up near that red top. So I think it's worth thinking about, you know, why don't we just use that, what it means to be showing appointed officials, the Planning Commission, this image as opposed to the one provided by the league. So I think that is worth something that we might want to spend some time thinking about.
Very good. Other comments from any council members caused by Manager Neal's remarks? Okay. Let's move on then to the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of all the items on the consent agenda in a single motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. And that will take us along to special recognitions and presentations. And we've got a presentation from the Edina Chamber of Commerce and Explorer Edina. It is their time of the year to make an annual report to the council. And Scott Neal's going to handle that introduction, and Shelley Lowberg from the chamber is with us and also representing Explorer Edina this evening. So, Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city of Edina is a member of the Edina Chamber of Commerce and also the Explore Edina aspects of the chamber. We are the primary funding vehicle for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is the function that Explorer Edina serves. We provide funding to Explorer Edina and the chamber through the lodging tax. We provide, 95% of the lodging tax goes directly to the Chamber of Explorer Edina. They provide an annual report each year that tells us how that money was spent and what's going on at the chamber. And I'd like to introduce Shelley Lowberg, who is the interim president of the Chamber of Commerce and Explorer Edina.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. It's always a pleasure to be here and tell you about some of the things that we do with the funds that Scott is addressing in lodging tax revenue. Just to review our mission, it is to attract regional, national, and international visitors to Edina, increase revenue, stimulate economic development, and create positive awareness for our community's tourism assets. First of all, I just want to give a little peer breakdown on our operational expenses. So on the right-hand column, you can see in 2022, our lodging tax revenue hit at $561,387. Our expenses are just below that. As you can see on the left, that's a comparison with a similar organization that is our size. Our staffing hits at about 35% of our revenue, our rent at 5%, and we have about six months of operating cash in savings reserve. Some of the marketing programs and assets that we have are a website, that is exploreedina.com. Our Edina Destination Guide, formerly printed, now downloaded online and interactive online. Our social channels, which are Facebook and Instagram, local event sponsorship in the community, local venue advertising. We have engaged in advertising at both Braemar Arena and Braemar Golf Course. We do local and regional print, local and regional digital advertising of many kinds, local media placements on television stations to promote different things going on in Edina. We have a signature event that Explorer Edina sponsors, which is called Style Edina. We're in our seventh year of putting on that event. And I'm really excited about a new partnership that I'm participating in this year with a company called Datafy. And this is a data collecting company that will give us information on people visiting the city, what they're engaging in, where they're staying, how much they're spending. This is a company that has a lot of app relationships, so it's all through apps on people's phones, and they have a special partnership with Mastercard. So we'll have some spending information as well. I do think every once in a while, it's really important to invest in research that helps us make better marketing decisions in the future. This is just a quick snapshot of our website and destination guide. So one of the things that we highlight are hotels. Our hotels are where the lodging tax revenue is collected. So when someone stays in one of our properties, they pay the 3% city tax that Scott is referring to. The city keeps 5%. 95% is used to fund Explorer Edina. So we highlight shopping, where to stay, where to dine, where to play, and we also highlight different experiences to have in the city. These are snapshots of our. These are snapshots of our social media channels, Facebook and Instagram. We've done some really cool partnerships with local influencers this year, which has been kind of a fun way to create new content for our social channels. Local event sponsorships. A number of years ago, we had some conversations with Scott and some of the council members at the time about the Visitor Bureau supporting local city events and the importance of that. Explorer Edina does promote local events, like the Edina Art Fair, for example, in many of our marketing programs, but many of the groups that are putting on these events also need sponsorship support. So we do take an average number of our, of our revenue at the end of the year, and we do budget that for, for supporting local events through sponsorship. And we do receive promotion as a sponsor in return for that. So some of the things that we've done this year are the Edina Art Fair, hockey tournament at Minnesota Made put on by a nonprofit in the Twin Cities area, our Fourth of July festivities, and the broadcast. The Edina Fall Into the Arts Festival, that's a special partnership because the Edina Chamber of Commerce is now serving as the administrator of the Edina Fall Into the Arts Festival, and therefore, Explorer Edina is marketing, doing all the marketing and advertising for the festival. And then we'll be a small sponsor of the Edina Car Show coming up at 50th and France, which is put on by the Rotary Club of Edina as a fundraiser for that Rotary Club. This is just an example of what one of our full-page print ads look like. We do promote Edina as a sophisticated community to shop and dine and have cool, fun experiences, whether it's with your girlfriends, or a couple, or your family. Some of our local partnerships are with MSP Magazine. We've had ads in Twins and Vikings official programs, Edina Magazine, and the Sun Current. And then I do like to work with regional magazines, and one of them that we've worked with this last year is Madison Magazine. Wisconsin tends to be a very important market for us. This is a highlight of our digital marketing programs. We do targeted email sends mainly through the Star Tribune. Those are all demographically and geographically and interest behaviorally targeted. So it's kind of cool. We can put a lot of content in an email. There's lots of links. People, we send traffic, web traffic to many of our partners, including the hotels and retailers. We do online content marketing, which is basically articles written about how to spend time in Edina. So we've done some fun ones about how to, you know, family recreation, or have a fun girlfriend getaway with shopping, dining, spa. And it's cool to get the stakeholders involved in those because the person writing can contact them, pull quotes from them, and then we make the article interactive, and those links go out to those partners as well. Graphic ads support many of our event-based advertising, like the Art, like the Art Festival, and we're also doing some, some video advertising on platforms like YouTube. Media appearances. We've been doing this a long time, actually, and the, the different spin that we have on this now is that Jody Mailers and Style Partners are the entity that are mainly doing the, the event appearances, and that's largely due to our, our partnership with her, as she's the producer and stylist for Style Edina. What we're trying to do is have a larger runway to promote the fashion show and promote Edina as a shopping destination. And so we're starting those placements earlier, pulling in those retailers, and then we have also a nice partnership with Belinda Johnson at Care 11, and so we're getting on Care 11 quite a bit, which is really nice on Saturdays. We've also developed a new, what's called a fashion concierge program at the Westin, and this is for high-end clients of the Westin, or actually any client of the Westin, but Jody and her team of stylists are basically a resource for someone if they're out of town and they suddenly need a dress for an event, or they forgot a pair of shoes, and they need help from a retailer. We've put together a selection of special partners that are mainly our Style Edina partners, where they can either contact that retailer directly, or Jody and her team can actually act as their stylist and make specific recommendations. So we do have a really cool landing page, and that's a fun partnership, and the retailers are actually paying to be part of that partnership. Are there any questions that I can answer? You guys, I know, have a budget from 2022 as well in your packets. At any time, my door is always open. I'm happy to grab a coffee, have conversations, and ask, answer any questions that you might have about our operations at Explorer Edina.
Thank you for that report. And then is there anybody on the council wishes to inquire from Ms. Lowberg? Yes, Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, good evening. Thank you for the report.
Good evening.
It's exciting to see Edina as a glamorous place, so I'm very thankful for the work that you do.
Absolutely.
A couple of questions. We heard from a strategic partner of, from Simon Properties today, and talking about the future of malls and sort of the combined, people are shopping online and then going in person to pick it up, or to return and everything. What type of promotion are you seeing, or traffic coming to Edina for Southdale and the Galleria, sort of on this new model? Are you seeing any, are you getting metrics on that? Are you seeing trends of how people come to Edina for those services?
Possibly when, from the company that I referenced earlier in the presentation, Datafy, we might be able to, to pinpoint that. But that's interesting question, Carolyn, because shopping behaviors have all completely changed, especially since the pandemic, but they were already changing before then. I think the pandemic just sped certain things up, and not everyone is comfortable going back out and doing, or they're spending their time in different ways. So it's all about efficiency, like I need to do more things, and if I can shop online, then. But that's, that will be an interesting question that I think I would pose directly to the administrative staff of the, of Southdale and Galleria and the Neighborhood Association at 50th and France. I'm seeing less foot traffic in stores in general when I'm out in the community, so I have to believe that that's going to be a consistent behavior moving forward.
Well, it'll be interesting to see how that goes with your promotion
Right.
techniques. The second thing is, the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
I'm so excited that we can get maybe some data from the Fourth of July parade and the fireworks. I think Member Risher and I were talking in the rain, and she said, well, I went around to talk to everybody and shake their hands. I'm with the Edina City Council. Like, oh, I don't live here. And so the number of people that were at the parade who are from other communities is tremendous. So it'll be interesting to see what kind of data you guys can gather on that.
Right.
Because it's a huge draw from communities all over. And then finally, as we're looking at the Macy's Furniture Store site.
Yes.
That in our comprehensive plan is directed towards, I want to say, convention center or activity, something that's a draw, an entertainment type of draw. So I would just share that with you and think about what you're hearing there's a need for in our community, because I think when they put the Southdale plan together, the chairs really saw that site as a, as a
An opportunity.
Opportunity for gathering people, for socializing and activities and things. So if you're hearing anything on that, I think we would be very interested in hearing that.
Absolutely. I will keep my ears to the ground. And same, you know, if you guys, if things come before you that you feel like our advocacy or input would be important on, I'm happy to, to put some thoughts together.
Terrific. Thank you, and thanks for your good work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions for Ms. Lowberg? All right. Very good. Thank you. Next is the, in this portion of the agenda is the Traffic Safety Request Process Review, and this was a matter requested by a couple of our council members just for informational purposes, and thought it would be beneficial to the residents in our community as well. And so Chad Milner and Andrew Cipione, our transportation planner, Chad Milner, of course, our Director of Engineering, are going to take us through this process of traffic safety review.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, thanks for the introduction. Exactly right. We met with council members Risher and Pierce recently, and they suggested we do a little bit more of an informational shout-out on this process. So we don't want to forget Nick Baller. He's not here tonight to help present, but he takes all these traffic safety requests, and he's presented recently in front of the council on how many he's taken. So just as right from his, his presentation to the council. So how does a traffic safety request work, and what is the process? We thought we'd just bring this up one more time. Request is submitted, and Andrew will get into the details a little bit more on this, but there's a request submitted by a property owner, resident, whomever. Nick collects data and does analysis, and then it goes to a committee, and that Traffic Safety Committee is engineering, public works, police, and planning, and then we make recommendations on that request. We take that to the Transportation Commission, eventually comes back to City Council. This is where we had some of the questions, and then Nick follows up with that requester on what was, what was done with that request, and we'll provide a little bit more detail on that here in a little bit. We wanted to get into more of how that committee makes recommendations. So we heard about the, the pyramid, and this is just a different take on it with traffic safety-related items. You'll notice the different levels, and we'll step through each one of those and how we use the, the standards to make the decisions, to make sure we have safe streets and sidewalks for all. On the right-hand side, we have engineering judgment. So each one of these steps may have an opportunity for myself or the rest of the Traffic Safety Committee to make some judgments on that. There might be some flex on what we can and can't do. So if you start at the bottom, those are really the state and federal rules with the MUTCD, and I'll get into that. Then we got city code, city policy, and city practice. So if we start at the bottom of the pyramid, this is the Minnesota Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So this is a state-specific version of federal highway administration. So some cases we can change, or have a little flexibility in standards. Other times we can't. So this is where we really start with the bar of, if this is the request, this is the data, we can or can't make a deviation, we go to this manual, and it really creates that uniformity, reduces crashes and congestion based in Minnesota, and also national when you're traveling and using our roads and streets. The next level is city code. You may adopt certain code and ordinances that have more prescriptive regulations than the statute, but we can't override the statute. So some of that might be on-street parking, local speed limits, which is what we've done recently, and other things like that that are more prescriptive, but don't override the statutes. City policy, we have different ways. Those policies can be approved by council. They could be approved by the city manager or at a department level, and it guides staff in those staff-level decisions and those reoccurring topics and issues. So this is where Nick gets some of the ability to just handle some of those typical traffic safety requests that come in without going through the full process. Some of those other policies, living streets policy is another one that we, we do. These can, of course, be overwritten by this body, and it provides that guidance for pedestrians, bicycle facilities, street widths, and crossing treatments where we have that flexibility. And then there's practice, city practice. That's those staff-level decisions based on our experience. We're balancing that engineering judgment again with operations and maintenance. And sometimes these practices transition the policies as necessary, either at this body or otherwise. But again, the council can override those decisions. Some of those include curb extensions, street widths, dynamic speed signs, and crosswalks. So if we go through there, there's also stuff where we just don't know the answer, or the manuals aren't telling us. So we go to all these other resources. So there's many research studies done by the local research board. There's organizations that I'm part of with the City Engineers Association, or the Public Works Association, where I can ping some of them and ask some questions, where we have all the other professionals in these industries with MinDOT, the county, and city, to say, what are you seeing on this topic? So we'll get feedback. And then there's a few other examples of, you know, the Center for Transportation Studies, Institute of Transportation Engineers, and other manuals that we look at when we make these decisions on these requests for traffic safety. Now I'll hand it back to Andrew to talk a little bit more in depth on the process itself.
Thank you, Chad. So if you want to go to the next slide, I'll just kind of explain a little bit more detail each of the steps in this process. But first, to talk a little more about the Traffic Safety Committee and kind of our philosophy. The, the city strives to make the most efficient and, or to use the most efficient and least intrusive signs, signals, and pavement markings for traffic control. So as the name implies, safety is a priority for our committee, and the data collection that we do, and the correspondence that we have with the requesters is intended to help us differentiate between perception and reality. We also, as a committee, strive for consistency in the application of our recommendations. We know that unwarranted action may create more of a safety issue. For example, with stop signs or crosswalks, in certain cases, installing these traffic control devices where they're not warranted could lead to a false sense of security for motorists, pedestrians, cyclists, transit users. So the Traffic Safety Request Process starts with the request being submitted to Coordinator Baller. So the Requestor provides their experience, maybe some observations of a possible traffic safety issue. If applicable, at times, staff refers these requests to other agencies. Sometimes we get requests that are specific to Hennepin County roads or MinDOT right-of-way. Then Nick begins that process of collecting, collecting data and analysis. That may include tube counters, putting up traffic cameras, more correspondence with that Requestor, reviewing signal timing, and looking at what existing traffic control devices may be in place. So then all that data is taken to the Traffic Safety Committee that meets on a monthly basis. And as Chad mentioned, that includes engineering, public works, planning, and police staff. So staff at that monthly meeting reviews the data, reviews applicable policies and guidance, and then considers their own experience and engineering judgment to issue a recommendation for each of these requests. In some cases, we need more information for the Requestor. And as I go through here, something I didn't mention before, the red stars noted on this indicate every point in the process where a resident or a Requestor has opportunity to provide feedback, to provide input into the process. So after the Traffic Safety Committee meets and issues their recommendations, the next month, the Transportation Commission reviews that monthly report. The Requestor may come to that meeting and speak in person to the Transportation Commission, or they can email the Transportation Commission to provide additional feedback or to advocate for the requests that they're making. At that meeting, the ETC may provide an alternative recommendation to what staff is recommending. At that point, staff can either remove that item for further study, or continue with their staff recommendation. But either way, the ETC's recommendation is included in that monthly report. Note that, if you recall, at a previous meeting, the ETC recently asked for a new work plan initiative to clarify communications with residents related to this process. So then that traffic safety report goes to City Council again on a monthly basis. It's on the consent agenda. Council members may remove that item for, if there are specific items that warrant more discussion. The Requestor may comment to City Council by email prior to that meeting, and then, assuming the items are approved by council at the meeting, staff then follows up with the Requestor, provides a detailed outcome of the results. Through our process, we, we have a practice that we don't consider repeat requests for four years unless there's been significant change in the area, so a redevelopment or some other major change in traffic patterns. At this time, requesters are also informed of the petition process that the city has if they wish to continue advocating for their request. So as I mentioned, again, the ETC initiative will be developing some communications to Requestors to help clarify the roles in this process. At this time, staff would not recommend any changes to the process. Again, if an item is of concern to council, it can be removed from the consent agenda, and staff can speak to it either at that meeting or at a subsequent meeting. And with that, we'll stand for any questions.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Cipione. Thanks, you, thank you to Director Milner. Questions from council members, comments? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, Edina 311, does that considered a request? How does that work in this process?
Thank you for the question. So within Edina 311, there is a specific category that people can request that says traffic safety issue. So that does, that goes to Nick Baller. You can also contact him through phone, through email. At times, requests will come in through comments on our social media posts, and Communications is really good about routing those to Nick if they feel they're appropriate.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. The other question is, with timing, do we warn the person who's made a request that it may take over a month to get back to them so that they're not sitting and waiting? Why haven't they gotten back to me three days later?
Yes, thank you for the question. So there are times in the winter, for example, we get requests that require data collection, and we can't do a lot of traffic data collection in the winter. So in those times, Nick would tell the Requestor that we will have to review the request at a later time. And then all throughout the process, as, if I go back here, as we get to those kind of milestones, the Traffic Safety Committee review, the ETC meeting, the council meeting, Nick is letting the Requestor know all along the way what the specific dates are and what their opportunities are for, to provide additional input.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Member Agnew.
Thank you. So first question is more process-focused. So when we do get requests for those county highways, like France Avenue is an example, can you walk me through like what that communication looks like and how we ultimately refer them to Hennepin County?
Sure. Thanks for the question. So in a way, it depends on the nature of the specific request. If it's If it's related to a traffic signal or pavement markings or roadway condition, we as staff would route it to Hennepin County staff that is specific to that certain request. We typically ask the county to follow up with the resident. We don't have a great way of ascertaining whether or not that has actually taken place. But in some cases, we also, if we have contact information available, we'll provide that to the Requestor as well so that they can reach out to the appropriate staff.
Wonderful. Thank you. So it does sound like it's more of a warm handoff rather than just providing a resident a, here's a website to go to with a request.
As best we can, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. And then the second question is more of a tactical, maybe the process-related as well. And it might be related to the new work plan item. But what tool do we use as a city to track these requests, contact information, touch points? I'm thinking of like an actual CRM or is there a tool that we're using internally to track and watch these requests as they funnel through this process?
Thank you for the question. So we, correct me if I'm wrong, but EDINA 311, if requests are submitted through 311, they're tracked there, and they're tracked through a program called CityWorks. If they're submitted through a phone call or through an email, I don't believe they're tracked in CityWorks, but Nick has his own kind of internal process for making sure that they follow along the same process and that he's following up with all requesters equally.
We typically track by year and spreadsheets and note the outcomes, when the dates come in, the contact information, the results, and then when we've communicated back. So that's that yearly report Nick comes back and shares with the council on all those requests and stuff by year.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments?
Yep. I do. Thank you. So one of the reasons we asked for this is there are a handful of issues within the community where residents were, didn't like the outcome, and questioned, I think of two cases, they questioned the data that we were using to make those decisions. And so, we've gone through the process, and then I am thinking what we are saying to those residents, which would be the case for anyone. If you get to a point where you're dissatisfied with the outcome, then you would follow the petition process, file that petition, and then that kind of kicks off this process where we look at the issue again, maybe we validate the data, what have you. And then, coming out of that process is a recommendation. Correct?
Yes. All petitions that are received, we come back to the City Council and provide a follow-up to every petition.
Yep. And then, in that process, I think most, and this was in your deck, most often, those things are on consent. And so, on your last slide, right, it says if there, here we go, council can remove from consent agenda if there's a question on anything, as well as residents can reach out to us. One of the questions that I have is, if we're in that petition process, are those items on consent as well? Or is there a process where those are forced to come in the council, and then the council make the decision on whether or not we use an engineering, I forget what you call it, engineering guidance or what have you?
So I think the process, you know, typically, we come back to council, and you might be getting emails from that Requestor. Most likely, you're going to approve the report. They're not going to agree with that final finding. So then they're going to submit a petition at the next meeting or a future meeting. We'd get the petition, then we'd come back and report back the findings of that petition, whether or not it changed staff's opinion, we'll maybe go back to the Requestor. What's the data? Maybe it's a data issue, and we got to explain better how the data was used or how we gathered it. So I think that petition can come in at any time, but I would imagine it coming in after the entire process because they don't know the outcome until this body makes a recommendation.
And then is the decision final prior to the petition? Or?
You can always go back and change. That's the petition kind of method. If they don't agree with the staff recommendations, council's approved it, maybe they feel like council didn't take their emails soon enough or important enough, and they still want to raise the issue at another level, that's where that petition process could do that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Member Pearson, and Member Rissler, for bringing this topic forward. I think it's going to be beneficial for all of our residents to see the process that we use. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to the next portion of the agenda, and that's public hearings. We've got two public hearing matters tonight. And the first one involves a request for preliminary rezoning, site plan and subdivision approval for 5100 Eden Avenue, which is across the street from the old Public Works site, the building known as the Building on Stilts, right on Highway 100. And our Community Development Director, Kerry Teague, is going to introduce the topic. And we've got a team here from OPUS to tell us about the project. It's been through the Planning Commission already. Director Teague will talk about that portion of the process. And then we'll, we're going to have a public hearing here and take public testimony this evening. And I suspect we'll leave this open for a week or so for more public input, and then take it up at the next council meeting. But I'm going to turn now to our Community Development Director, Kerry Teague, for the initial presentation. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. As mentioned, this property is located in the Grandview District, again, known as the Building on Stilts. Here's a picture of it. It's a 38,000-square-foot office building surrounded by surface parking, and you can park underneath the building. You can see an aerial here. The site is guided in our comprehensive plan as a mixed-use center. So that's all of this kind of purple color. And note that there's a number of zoning districts within that mixed-use center. There's been some discussion lately that our zoning doesn't completely match our comprehensive plan. This is a classic example of that. There's, we've got commercial zoning districts, the purple here are PUDs, the orange are planned office districts. The yellow is industrial, kind of a leftover zoning. And the library, Grandview Square, that's a mixed-development district. That was kind of the form of PUD before PUDs. The idea here is all of these uses are allowed within that mixed-use center. The idea was if a property owner wanted to rezone their property to change the use, that it would be intentionally, if we didn't rezone the whole district to mixed-use center, rather that, so that property owners weren't entitled that maximum density. It was the rezoning process using that give-to-get to accomplish some of the things that the city's trying to achieve, like affordable housing, the sustainable building policy, enhanced pedestrian sidewalks, those types of things. So I just wanted to kind of highlight because that's a topic that we've discussed in the past. There have been a number of studies done in the Grandview District. The next couple of slides are from the Grandview Development Framework. So the site that we're looking at, it's always been contemplated for some type of housing, potentially office. So you can see here's Arcadia. The idea was to provide some type of lower height along the street, maybe row homes. And the buildings behind closer to the freeway would be potentially office, potentially residential, depending on market forces at the time of redevelopment. There was also a transportation study that was done. So note on this slide that two frontage roads are planned on both sides of Highway 100. The council may recall with the Perkins Development, the site that's under construction now, this area here is part of that give-to-get through the PUD. The developer at that time dedicated all of this land for the city to use for the construction of that roadway. With the site that we're looking at this evening, this frontage road can be accommodated within the existing right-of-way. So we didn't need to take additional land or ask the developer as part of that give-to-get to provide additional land for that road to go through. The applicant did go through the sketch plan process. This is a couple of renderings of the project. One thing I wanted to just point out is, in that sketch plan, the first level at that time was, the first was to be parking, so it didn't engage the street or the public realm, which is really on all four sides of this site. Another rendering of that. So this was the site plan that was considered. There were to be two access points along Arcadia, also one on Eden, and they were proposing a smaller parking lot out front. So the applicant has made a number of revisions from that sketch plan, based on the feedback from the Planning Commission and the City Council. So just to highlight a few of those, they've increased building setbacks. They're now proposing 10 feet on all sides. It was as close to, on Arcadia and Eden, up to four to five feet. So it's not significant, given the size of this building, but it is pushed back from the street slightly. They reduced the mass of the building by fully burying all the parking, so they essentially pushed the building down to reduce the height. And now there's more of that engagement on the street. They've introduced commercial space in the northwest corner, including patio space. They're proposing a public park. That parking lot has been replaced with that park. They've expanded the sidewalk network to include sidewalks on both the north and east side of the building. They've eliminated a couple of those primary access points, one off Eden and one off Arcadia. They've added some building setbacks on Arcadia and enhanced the landscaping. So just quickly, and the applicant will go through in more detail the building, but this is the building that's proposed. It's still 136 units, the same number of units that we considered at sketch plan. So here is that one-story retail. It then steps back for four levels of housing and then steps back again. There is no step back at the intersection. Moving to the south, you can see the small park that would be, so this would be dedicated to the public but maintained by the property owner. This is that sidewalk that moves around the building. This would be the corner of Eden and Arcadia. Building materials, so when the planning, so the building will be made of brick with some architectural cladding. One of the conditions that the Planning Commission is recommending when they reviewed the project was that the amount of brick be equal to the code requirement. They're required on all public-facing sides, which are all four sides here. That 60 feet up from the ground, it needs to be brick. So the applicant is agreeable to that condition, but they'd like to place the brick in certain locations more than others. Part of their presentation, they'll demonstrate where those locations are. So here is the proposed site plan. You see the retail in the northwest corner with the patio, the pedestrian walk around the building, the park that's replaced that surface parking lot. Some of the units walk out. The driveway entrance has been eliminated on Eden. So this request requires a rezoning. Again, as I mentioned, currently zoned planned office district. There would be a new zoning district established for the site, planned unit development. So there's an ordinance in your packet that would be incorporated into the code that the PUD would become the zoning on the site. The PUD would ensure that affordable housing is included in the project and that the sustainable buildings policy is met. The applicant is agreeable to meeting our sustainable buildings policy. So in exchange, the applicant is requesting flexibility from the current standards of the site, those current planned office district standards. And they're pretty significant. There's a big ask here. They're asking for flexibility, and I'll show a table in a minute, but flexibility in building height, building transparency, first-floor ceiling height, building setbacks on all sides, floor area ratio, and building coverage. But again, just to emphasize, the PUD rezoning is the tool that the city has used to ensure compliance with the affordable housing policy and the sustainable building policy. There's also preliminary site plan proposed, and also a subdivision or replat. So to explain that a little bit, the site was originally platted as seven lots. Not sure the exact reasoning or the history of the site, but some of them are platted, and there's some meets and bounds description. So they're really replating, they're not subdividing, creating new lots. They're combining those seven lots into one. Some additional site plan information in regard to parking. Parking is all underneath the building. Based on city code, 166 stalls are required. There are 183 proposed, so that's both for the apartments and the commercial use. StanTech Consulting did a parking and traffic study, and they've concluded that 176 stalls are needed to support the project. So meets both our code requirements and the consultant's conclusions. They also did a traffic study and have concluded that no improvements are needed in the area. Ed Terhar is with us on the line if you have any questions in regard to the traffic studies that have been done. And Director Milner has firsthand knowledge on all the studies and the construction that's taking place in the area and can answer questions as well. In terms of landscaping, they exceed our code requirement. 24 over-story trees required. They're proposing 37. So this next graphic demonstrates the flexibility that they're requesting. So within this column are the PUD, the Planned Office District Standards. They're requesting 10-foot setbacks on all sides. This is a typo here, that is 10 feet. The height overlay district requires a four-story and 48-foot maximum. They're proposing seven stories here and 82 feet. Building coverage is 68 percent, so again, pretty significant. The maximum floor area ratio is 3.2 and .5 is the PUD standard. They're code-compliant with parking. First-floor building height, they're suggesting lower ceiling heights, again, to help with that sustainability in the project. They're proposing 13 to 14 feet. And then the transparency on the first level, we require that 75 percent be transparent. They're suggesting that the commercial use would meet that 75 percent, but the residential would be at 40. So the primary issue is, is this proposal reasonable to justify the PUD rezoning for the site? So an argument can be made for this one, both for and against. The city has complete discretion whether to approve or deny this request. Staff has provided the council with alternatives within the staff report for both approval and denial. And just to quickly show the pyramid of discretion, we will use, this is from the League of Minnesota Cities here, but it's really just demonstrating, this is in the green area, that the city does have complete discretion to approve or deny this request. So lastly, what I thought I would do is walk the council through the PUD criteria. So this criteria, the purpose and intent of a PUD is to include most of these criteria. So the first is to provide the establishment of a PUD district in appropriate settings and situations to create or maintain a development pattern that's consistent with the comprehensive plan. So as I mentioned, this is a mixed-use center district. The uses here are consistent with the comp plan. There are roadways on all four sides here. This is really the beginning of the district as you transition into the district. Introducing more residential uses within this primarily retail area would enhance and vitalize existing businesses and increase pedestrian movement in the area and potentially increase the number of transit users. Second criteria is to promote a more creative and efficient approach to land use within the city while at the same time protecting and promoting health, safety, comfort, aesthetics, economic vitality, and general welfare of the city. So this proposal would certainly create a more efficient and creative use in the property than exists there today. There's no surface parking. Pedestrian movement within the site is much safer with those boulevard-style sidewalks and the pedestrian way on the north and east side of the building. And as mentioned, providing more residents in the area could enhance the economic vitality of the district. And fourth is provide for variations to the strict application of the land use regulations in order to improve site design. So this is, these are some of the items that the city is trying to achieve in exchange for that flexibility. So those desired elements include sustainable design, that's where the sustainable building policy comes in, greater utilization of new technology in building design, construction material, landscaping, lighting, stormwater management, pedestrian, or lighting, stormwater management, pedestrian-oriented design, podium height, and again, that transition to residential neighborhoods, parks or other sensitive uses. So the variations to the land use regulations are requested to offset the significant costs for providing affordable housing and doing a sustainable building. Again, that's well beyond the minimum requirements of a building code. Providing underground parking, also very expensive. Additional items that are included here within the project are enhanced landscaping, stormwater management being managed underneath the site, the pedestrian-oriented design in that podium height along Arcadia, and the provision of the public park. So quickly, I'll move through some of the other criteria. The building would be high-quality brick. The meeting the sustainable building policy also increases the quality of the design. The project would maintain the efficiency of public streets and utilities. The existing site is primarily paved with an office building today. There are a handful of trees, but will be replaced with more high-quality trees. The project is a mixed-use project with the introduction of the retail and the park. One of the key elements here is the provision of 14 units for affordable housing. This will help us meet our goals with the Met Council. So again, they would be built within the project. Ensure the establishment of appropriate transition between differing land uses. As I mentioned, this is really the, as you transition into the Grand View District, this is the start of that. So as mentioned, the recommendation this evening is to close the public hearing at noon, August 21st, continue action to September 5th. But just to add, that staff and the Planning Commission are recommending approval of the project, subject to those conditions and findings that are outlined in the staff report and resolution. The Planning Commission vote was six to zero, and they did add three conditions that have been included in the resolution. That's that code-compliant amount of brick on the project, that a crossing be considered on Arcadia, and the landscaping be enhanced on the north side and protected during construction. And the applicant here is, in part of their presentation, they're going to address some of those issues that the Planning Commission had raised. So with that, I can stop for answering any questions. And as mentioned, the development team is here for presentation as well.
Questions from council members for staff. Director Teague, Member Agnew has a question or two for you.
I think just one. Thank you for the presentation. You kicked off with a little bit of an overview of this, which I appreciated, but there's a discrepancy between the comp plan and what is currently zoned. And so when I think about, you know, kind of why that is, can you walk me through, how did we get to a situation where the comp plan is different? And then also, how we should view that as a city? Not that there's one that's right and one's wrong, but how do we navigate that discrepancy? And which one should be more of the guide for us as a city?
Yes, certainly. Excellent question. So as mentioned, it is guided mixed-use center. That was established back in 2008 with that comp plan update. And it was decided at that time not to rezone all of the parcels within that area to some other type of zoning that would allow all of those uses. It was really done intentionally to do it on a case-by-case basis, to try to achieve some of the goals that the city has established for itself, the sustainable building policy, affordable housing, those types of things. So it was really done intentionally. So all of the uses that are allowed within these varying zoning districts are allowed within that mixed-use center. So they're consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's just that the existing zoning doesn't allow all of the uses that the comp plan suggests are possible for the site?
Thank you. Kind of double-click on that. I'm trying to understand, like, is this normal? Is this like, kind of the general process? And what I mean by that is, I have an impression that we go through the comprehensive plan, and there's probably going to be a lot of areas of the city in which the kind of guided use is going to be different than underlying zoning. And I assume that it would probably be a heavy lift to go through, and it would potentially create other issues if we went through and updated all of the zoning across the city to align to the comprehensive plan. So as I understand it, this is kind of, this is the way it's supposed to work, where we have the guide that's presented through the comprehensive plan, and then as there are changes, we go through this process. But I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that part of it correctly.
Yes, I think you described that precisely. The other option is to do just what you were suggesting, is we could go through and rezone all of these sites to exactly match the comprehensive plan. If we were to do that, by state law, we can't require buildings to be constructed above the building code. So we would lose our sustainability policy. The same goes for the affordable housing. So we can do it that way. This is the way that the city has chosen.
Thank you.
Other question? Yes, Member Pierce.
Thank you. I think my question is a follow-up to that, but maybe from a pragmatic perspective. And so what we have now is planned office, right, PUD. Request is to go PUD. And on slide, what slide is this? The slide where the table is. There we go. And so when I look at this, using the table, right, dictates or directs me to compare left to right. And when I look at this, if I were to do that without the full context of what Member Agnew was going through, he would look at the first one and say, well, my goodness, that is so far out of whack. There's, that just, there's no way we should be allowing that kind of a difference of going from 35 feet to 10 feet, right? And so my question along those lines is just kind of help, help me and others who might be looking at that to really understand how to internalize the data, and then what correlations should we be thinking about in order to compare the proposed?
Yes, so in terms of setbacks, I probably should have done this, but the setbacks proposed here are generally consistent with what was approved across the street on the city project, as well as consistent with the Trammell-Crowe project on the other side of the railroad that are, that's been brought up to the street. So this project is generally similar. You can see here, the red is the lot line. So while the structure is only set 10 feet back from that lot line, there's a large amount of right-of-way to the street. So as you're driving along the street, it won't seem as tight to the street. Actually, it won't seem as tight as the project to the west and further west. So that, so the, for the council to decide, it's part of the, part of the decision is... Want to go back to the table. Is what they're requesting reasonable, given all the public benefit?
And I guess what I am saying, and you started to do this with the setbacks, relative to what? And so I think the way this is teed up, it's relative to PUD, but this isn't a PUD structure. And so you started by making it relative to something else that's in the district. That would just be helpful as we move forward, to have something that gives that, that we can correlate it to, that it is similar to in the district versus sticking with just PUD. You could show both, and I understand why you have it there. But I would ask for that next time.
Yeah, that's excellent, and I can sure do that. The one thing, so the FAR is generally maybe a little higher. We typically, within these PUDs, are seeing FARs anywhere from two to three. So this is a little bit above three. The one thing that is significant is the building coverage here. Usually, we're closer to the underlying zoning district at 68 percent. That is pretty large compared to other projects. That's, that's the one that really sticks out compared to other PUDs that we've done.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff at this point in time? Yes, Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think what we're all kind of struggling with, this is a big project, and it is a big building. So my questions are a little bit more detail-oriented. I'm looking at the west corner where the building looks like it's just right almost on the lot line. Is that 10 feet?
That's 10 feet.
That's 10 feet, okay. And then to the north, what is the future, do we know, of that off-ramp from Highway 100? Because if that's going to be developed at some point in time, this is really going to be close to their neighbors. So can you give us sort of a, get your crystal ball out and let us know?
Yeah, Chad can correct me if I'm wrong, but ideally, we'd like to see the off-ramp eliminated. Potentially, you know, within the Grand View framework, there's that pedestrian bridge that would connect up with City Hall. That would be a great thing to do, potentially within that area. But perhaps Director Milner has anything else?
Totally agree. We think it's a good place for like a public walkway leading to a bridge and then landscape on each side and make it more of an amenity than an off-ramp that's really not needed after we do that much bigger project in two years.
Okay, so this is publicly-owned land. It's not going to go into the private market, most likely.
Mind that would give us the first crack at this property.
Okay, good. I lost my train of thought. Oh, the sidewalk cut there, maybe the developer will go into this, but those triangular cuts are really kind of awkward. It'd be great to have it go straight across to the north and across to the west, well, to the north here. In the northwest corner here, where it's a triangular cut for the sidewalk, it looks like, in the boulevard. So the boulevard comes up and curves.
Yeah, Member Jackson, we would look at that during the final, when they submit their permits. We don't, this is just a graphic. Can we make sure those, those walkways are straight through different intersections?
Okay, I just want to make sure that however that's done, it's safe. Because I know at 72nd and France, that's a neighborhood concern. So just want to make sure that's as safe as possible. And I think those are... Oh, the traffic study. We've got this retail spot, and people will be parking on the street, it looks like, to, or coming on foot to patronize that store. What did this traffic study say about the traffic for that retail?
Well, for the overall project, the existing streets can support it. So this has probably been the most studied, studied area of town over the last seven years. I think we've done a study almost every year. We had to verify all the numbers that just went into this and all the other projects approved with our much bigger project here on Vernon and 50th, and it supports this development and all the other ones that we were thinking of or that have been completed to date.
Okay, so the on-street parking will be sufficient to handle the retail traffic?
There's also parking available underneath the building. There's...
Okay, for the public to...
For the public.
Okay, very good.
Spaces designated for the retail.
All right, excellent. That's, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Rissar, any questions at this point in time?
I do have questions, and I want to thank you for your presentation. One of the big concerns is that point about the building coverage, that 68 percent. And you do the math, you're going from 30 percent to 68 percent, which is a multiplier of like 2.22. So essentially, we're treating a 1.3-acre site as if it was 3.08 acres. And that's a really big ask. And I can't help but think, you know, the whole idea behind PUD is to provide flexibility. But are we, you know, going way beyond that? What, and also thinking about incremental change is supposed to be part of it as well. And I feel like we need to ask, are we gently bending or are we twisting and, you know, perhaps even breaking? And we did just come from our work session where we talked about water quality and runoff and all of that. And this is something, you know, I did appreciate you mentioning all the other projects that this was similar to. And we have really normalized treating lots as if they are over twice their actual size. And I'm, I remember back when PUD was kind of in its formation, and the big exciting thing about it was that it would be a way in which you could have some flexibility, but you could have green, open, permeable surfaces. And that was one of the big talking points, and we have completely gone away from that. So that, that is a really significant concern that I have. And I guess I'm not really asking for a response to that, but I just want to get that out there. The other issue, though, that I do have is I'm looking at the Grand View District Transportation Study, and I also went over several other studies, including for Maison Green, and just looking at the data that was collected, and also just looking at the initial visioning that we have. And if you look at the transportation study that was done in 2016, page 23, you have this beautiful image of walking and biking access. And back then, we were talking about having separate walk and bike paths, and those going both, you know, north, south, east, west. We don't have that. It came up when we were talking about the plan for the Public Works Development. And when I asked about having a separate bike path, I was told that wasn't necessary. People didn't want to bike in the street. They could bike on the sidewalk. And we do use the sidewalk as our bike trail. So I appreciate that we are adding more wide sidewalk spaces, but there is so much that is going on in this area, and I am concerned about that. Also, looking at the numbers and the level of service grades that come out in the transportation reports, a lot of concerns there because, you know, we're seeing level of service grades of D and E. And one question I do have, as I'm looking at the table, table seven, and I believe this report is the one that was done for the Grand View Study or the Public Works Site, but I'm not seeing a grade for West 50th Street and Eden or Eden and Grange. And perhaps that's because we're putting in those roundabouts, but those are the intersections that buffer our police station. And I'm concerned about how things are actually going to work and the ability of our officers to be able to, you know, move in this setting. So if you could comment on that, that would be helpful. Or maybe Mr. Terhar could comment on that.
I think I can comment on that, Member Rissar.
Okay.
Anytime you put in a roundabout, the operations go from your DREs to an A. They have functioned better than any different type of traffic control device. So when you look at the three roundabouts we'll have after this project opens next door, it's going to operate way better, way more efficient than it ever did in the past with four-way stops. During the design of both of those projects, we worked directly with our police department to make sure there's extra space. If on the chance, they need to report somewhere during school, the half hour of the morning and at night, that's when those sections have always been backed up, and they will continue to be backed up. You can't design for that level of traffic. But we've designed them for space where they can go over the top of those medians and get out of the area wherever they need to. So we're addressing the public safety and very comfortable with the operations after those roundabouts have been installed.
You also can't control a roundabout. It's not like a traffic stop where the police can, I don't know how they do it, but click a button and what, how, anyway, you can't do that with a roundabout. So I do have concerns there. I also have concerns about just the volume of change that we're seeing and the timing of this. You know, we're having, Maison Green is going to open up, OLG has expanded, we are adding the senior co-op, we're adding the restaurant. I went over the report and I found, and this was really kind of amazing, that for the traffic study, it was noted that there wasn't going to be any consideration for people driving to the green space, the public park, because the assumption was that they would be coming over for another purpose. But as I look at that big, slopy hill that is there, you know, and think about the change of seasons and all of that, I really do wonder if we should have had some kind of estimate of the public actually driving to that public area that is at the Public Works Site. And that does kind of beg several questions, you know, like if we're creating public parks... And that does kind of beg several questions, you know, like if we're creating public parks and we're not really thinking of them as being an attraction for people outside of the area, you know, who aren't just right there, I think that's a problem. So I am concerned about all of the changes that are going on and having the infrastructure that we really need in order to have pedestrian and bike safety. And I'm thinking that we're really moving away from the initial plans that were created for the Grand View area. And even if you look at this image that we see right here, you see green, you know, and you don't really see that in the projects that are coming forward, even though I know this is a very rough thing. But we're just, we're getting rid of so much pervious surface and ability to have trees, which are so important. So, thank you.
Member Jackson had a follow-on.
Yes, could you tell us how the stormwater is going to be handled on this site, please?
It's underground. Maybe we could have an engineer. It'll be, runoff will be directed to the underground system.
It'll be flooding and clean water requirements of the city and the watershed. So it's going to be a much better condition than exists today. And the whole site is typically impervious today. That's not treated, so it's going to be an improvement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
That's where I was going to go too, when I think back to when that old Public Works Building was there and the whole 3.3 acres essentially was covered in asphalt. This is, what's proposed here is a pretty remarkable improvement in pervious versus impervious, along with the stormwater management. Is that what I hear you saying?
I can say stormwater management is going to be much improved. Whether it's more or less impervious, I don't have that number right offhand, but they're required to submit that as part of their stormwater plan, and maybe they can speak to that during their presentation if it's more or less impervious compared to the existing conditions today.
Yeah, I can answer. It is actually more.
More pervious, more impervious?
Correct.
Okay, that's good to know. So you had a unanimous vote at the Planning Commission in favor of this project. What was the general sentiment of the Planning Commission?
Yeah, they felt.
Where they were so kind of uniformly enthusiastic about their reset level of consensus?
Yeah, they were. They really thought that the developers responded to the feedback that they gave at Sketch Plan. All of the public benefits, they felt with the sustainable building, the affordable housing, the mixed use, the engagement of really all four sides, a four-sided building, the increase in brick that they agreed to put on the building, they felt pretty good about the, the public benefits were worth relaxing the development standards for the site.
Do you have another question, Member Rissar?
I do, I forgot. I did want to ask, when we go to the chart, and I really appreciated Member Pierce's questions, why are we keeping Planned Office as the underlying zoning? Why don't we rezone to Planned Residential?
There is no underlying zoning. We're just starting with the Planned Office District Standards as a starting point to compare what the new standards will be. I think we, moving forward, we compare other comparable PUDs in addition to whatever the current zoning is. But with this project, the POD zoning district goes away and the PUD becomes the new zoning for the site, so there's no underlying zoning.
Okay, it looked like, when I look at, what is the situation with Maison Green?
Same thing.
Same thing. So PCD is just there for only that, okay.
It's PUD.
PUD, but, well, there's a business section of it. Do we need to have, maybe we need a pervious surface standard for PUD?
Was that a question or a comment?
It was a comment. I know I've seen 50%, you know, as sort of a goal for, when I was reading more about it, I can't remember where I saw that. But we do have standards in place for all our other zones, I believe, so that we do guard the pervious surface, and we're not doing that at all for PUD.
Yeah, the only impervious surface standards that we have are, is the R1 zoning district. That was the new standard that was put in place a year or so ago. So we don't have an impervious surface requirement in any of our commercial districts. So that is something that we should think about.
Member Jackson?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, the reason that we put PUD under this comprehensive plan was so that we could have the give-to-get. And if everything was already zoned, we lose the give-to-get, which is the sustainable building policy, the affordable housing policy, architectural standards. If they were to come in and build an office building the exact same size as the one that's there, we wouldn't be having this conversation. They would just go to building permit department and build their building. Is that correct?
Almost. It's, if they were to tear the office building down and build a new office building, it would be a site plan review, and so that would come before Planning Commission and Council. But it's really a checklist to make sure they're meeting the setback requirements, those kinds of things.
Okay, and we wouldn't have much control over any of the content or anything, just so long as it was within the zoning code?
Correct.
Or discretion, to your point.
Or discretion, yes, thank you.
Yep, we're getting it, well, let's go to the pyramid. So it would be this plan review in the red area where if it meets code, you have no discretion, you have to approve it.
Thank you.
That's what Member Agnew raised, a really interesting question here. So here we got, in 2008, a comprehensive plan, piece of work that was, I guess, embraced in 2018 when we did the next comp plan. And that was, we went to mixed-use center in this whole area, not knowing exactly what it was going to become, but wanting to try to create as much flexibility as possible. And this happens around town, you know, you, again, back to that point I made before, is that you can't think 50 years ahead all the time and be right. So then, in '08 and again in '18, when we made this mixed-use center to kind of give ourselves flexibility, now you come along with a project that has PUD possibilities based on, as Member Jackson says, give-to-get. And so you end up with what on the face of it appears to be a conflict between the underlying zoning, the POD and the mixed-use center. And then you're switching to PUD to get away from that conflict. And if you think that your comp plan is the guide to the future, at least the short-term guide to the future, then you're trying to do things that align more with your comp plan than necessarily the underlying zoning. And that's, I think what's happened here is that the PUD evolved as a result of that because, as you pointed out in the Planning Commission, we're getting things we might otherwise not get, and Member Jackson pointed out the same thing, but for the use of PUD.
That's true, and I think it's fair to say that that flexibility that's being requested is becoming more and more as we do these PUDs. So it might be something that we want to, you know, the underlying zoning classifications are very old, they were established a long time ago. Maybe we need to take a look at those as well.
That still begs the question that Member Rissar raised, and that is, well, you know, when they were here for a sketch plan, one of the ideas we had because of the minimal setbacks they had was to go taller, skinnier and create more green space. They didn't do that.
Correct.
They didn't do that. But they came up with a plan that the Planning Commission really liked. So I guess I'm eager to talk to the applicant about that. That's, that wasn't your decision, that was their decision, and that's the way they did it. And I personally thought they should have gone taller along the highway and skinnier so that we could, we wouldn't have this setback issue and we would have less impervious surface. But we'll chat with them about that when they come up here. Anything else for Director Teague, Member Rissar?
Back to PUD, I know a lot of people think of it as being something you apply to a larger area. And I feel like in Edina, PUD could be any size lot. And it almost feels as if we're using PUD as a way to bespoke zone so that, you know, you do it for one developer, for one project, and it's not a large area where you're having a lot of different types of uses. How common is it for others, do you see other cities using PUD in this way?
Yep, so from my experience, when I was with New Brighton, they did very small lot PUDs. Other cities, Edina, when we first established the PUD, we did have a minimum lot size, I believe it was two acres, and that, that was removed. We eliminated that minimum standard. But it's not uncommon to have a minimum standard for a PUD.
Thank you.
Member Pierce. So, for what it's worth, I do like the concept of having this broad mixed-use center with the intent that as the area develops, then we can figure out how we need to have zoning, right? And so it's something that, like to your point, you can't, I always thought of the comprehensive plan as a guideline. And so the further you get out from approval of that comp plan, things change. Oftentimes, that the next week, something has changed, right? And so I do like that construct on the surface, but what happens is you still need some kind of relative way to understand when you're making a decision that's against the comp plan, because it does sometimes feel like we're kind of making it up as we go. And in all fairness, sometimes we are. We've got a project and we think it's a good fit, so we do the give-to-get, so then we kind of have to have the conversation of how do we zone for it. But I think, right or wrong, that's the way it was intended and designed to work. If for whatever reason we think we need to change that, then I think we have to do the hard work of deciding how to do that and start working with the Planning Commission and others to do that. But for now, I think if we can explain how we're moving forward when projects do come in, in a clear way so that people understand it, is what I think we have to do at this point in time.
Thank you, Director Teague. Maybe more than you planned for, but it was really a nice, interesting conversation. So we've got, I think you've got the applicant scheduled for about 15 minutes of presentation here, and you want to introduce the team that's coming up, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Nick Bernand with Opus Development. Nice to see you all again tonight. We'll get it set up here. I'll also be joined with Theo Grothie from our design team. We'll flip through the presentation, recognize that, thank you, Director Teague, very in-depth detail, so we'll flip through it rather quickly and make sure we have plenty of time for comments and questions and discussion. So we do have a material board over here as well that will show on slides as well, but happy to bring that around and bring it closer if you'd like. I think with that, I can hand it over to Theo to kick us off.
Thank you, Mr. Bernand.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, council members and mayor, for having us back. We're actually very excited to show you what we have tonight, and we've made a lot of changes and took a lot of comments into consideration from our sketch plan process, and we thank you for those comments. As always, it made the project better, and so we're very excited to show you what we have today. So I'm going to run through pretty quickly just some of the changes and updates that we've made to try to be more inclusive into this Grand View neighborhood. And I'll start at the northwest corner and just work my way around, pointing out some of the things that we've made. We did update this graphic to include the, what's happening across the street so that we can kind of show how we're tying into that a little bit better. But starting off at the northwest corner with our single-story retail space, that was an add from our sketch plan supplemental. We did not have any retail space. Took that point into consideration, added it here. And you can see really that what we're doing is we're opening up our building to the north and the west into the kind of the heart of Grand View District. So we have a single story, we're stepping back up to another three stories for our residential, and then another fairly significant step back to the tallest part of the building. Around that retail, we have some retail patio and widened sidewalks. You know, we've talked a lot about impervious today. One of the things that we've heard during Sketch Plan was multimodal transportation, so pedestrians and bikes. We have no less than an eight-foot sidewalk anywhere on this site. If we were to go down, obviously that would start to decrease our pervious, and we could actually probably get pretty close to what's existing on-site. We're not that, we're a little bit more now, but we're not that different to what's happening right now. Running down Arcadia, we have a 10-foot sidewalk, and that's really, again, to promote bikes and pedestrians to walk up and ride up that side of Arcadia. Recognizing that on the other side, in the framework plan, there was what was called, I think, an art walk or an Arcadia promenade. We're trying to do that on this side of the street. So 10-foot sidewalks opening up to a proposed public park, we're nestling it in, there's a lot of slope on this site, so we have a number of kind of steps that open this up as much as possible to that sidewalk and really create this inclusive park that can be used by anybody in the neighborhood. So as we move down to the southwest corner, we are taking away the roughly 15 feet of retaining wall at that corner and really nestling the building right at Grade and opening it up with Plaza right at that location. That's the main entrance into our residential area. But really trying to connect back to the, to the street and the sidewalk network and activating that corner, because right now it is not at all activated. Like Director Teague mentioned, our parking is completely buried, so we have one parking entrance on Arcadia. Almost 100% of the site at Grade is activated through either the retail space, our lobby space, some of the amenities that we're providing for our residents. And then as we go up on the east side of Eden, that's where we start to engage the street with actual residential units. So as we move around the east side, you can see then we have some of these walk-up units. In the framework plan, there was a lot of Taco Row homes. That didn't quite work for us for this site, but what we're trying to do is do something similar as that, thinking about the future, thinking about those roads that are going to come on the west side of Highway 100 and really start to make this a neighborhood feel, both east side of our project and north side of our project. So along the east side, residential units that open up to that proposed pedestrian walkway and bike path. And then along the north side, at the northeast corners where we have residential amenities, so we have a fitness center and a yoga studio right at that corner. So lots of glass activation right at that corner, trying to, again, activate that, that corner as we, you know, think about the future when those two roads intersect at that corner. And then again, moving west is the, we're back at the retail space with patio. And I think, Councilmember Jackson, you were asking about the 45, was that, was that kind of right at that corner? Or was that up?
It's the cut in the sidewalk.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. So we'll work with engineering to make sure that that's, that's all, how it should be and safe for everybody. So this graphic then starts to talk about how we're responding to some of the comments that we heard at Planning Commission. Bike racks at both the retail space and at the residential plaza. A proposed crosswalk, we think, would work really well right at this northwest corner. Arcadia is very steep, so anywhere south of that, it would be very hard to get an ADA compliant crosswalk. We don't even know if it's going to work here. Again, we'll work with the engineering department. But that seemed to be the best connection across the street. Again, that's why we put the other development on here to try to, you know, inform ourselves where this would be best. And then planting along that north side so that we create a nicer environment for anybody who's biking or walking. We have eight to 10-foot pedestrian and bike lanes on that north and east side. We're going to try to, right now we're showing eight. We heard that maybe 10 feet would be better. So if topography and existing tree locations allow, we'll try to walk. So, if topography and existing tree locations allow, we'll try to widen those as much as possible. And then, for better maneuverability, down at the, the southeast corner, and anywhere else where we can, we're just going to rate, you know, add radiuses, so that bikes can kind of swing around and travel that path pretty easily. Site sections. So we wanted to give a better feel of what is actually outside of the building, between the curb and the edge and face of our buildings. There's been a lot of talk about the small setbacks, but there's a lot of right-of-way in this location, and so we feel like moving from a four-foot to a 10-foot setback was good, but there's also additional right-of-way that we can make use of as part of the public give. So this section cuts east to west through our public park, through that widened sidewalk along Arcadia, and then through our amenity zone that, again, since we pushed the building down, is now much better connected to the neighborhood. And so approximately five feet up, it's that perfect kind of zone where it's connected, but a little bit separate, so that anybody in that amenity zone can have a little bit of privacy, but still be connected to the neighborhood. And that allows us really to open up the building again to the, to the heart of the neighborhood. And then on the east side, that green space and sidewalk, again, thinking about the future and the future frontage road that would be adjacent to our property line at that location. On the left-hand side, we are looking at the area that is adjacent to our lot, excuse me, lobby leasing area. So this is that pedestrian plaza that we're, we're creating. Again, very wide, lot of movement that can happen in between there. Still keeping that green boulevard per the engineering department's recommendation, to give a little separation from the street, but opening it up next to the building. And then on the right-hand side, this is adjacent to that on-off ramp, that odd road that runs along the north side. Again, trying to show what a retail plaza would look like there, next to a multimodal zone for travel. This is the same retail plaza space, but on Arcadia, so east to west through our retail space, and then showing the fairly significant stepbacks that we're proposing along there to bring down the scale of the building and open it up to the district. And finally, the section on Eden. So, widened sidewalk, our boulevard next to the street, and then a lot of green space adjacent to the building. So even though we are 10 feet or better to the property line, to the curb, we're, you know, 20 to 40 feet away. Some updated renderings. We talked a lot about materials during Planning Department, and so one of the conditions was to use a calculation as if we were going 0 to 60 feet with brick, and then allowing us to take that calculation and apply the brick in a little bit more judicious way around the building, to allow us to kind, to, to create this four-sided architecture. So, during the initial Planning Commission presentation, this whole back wall was a different material. We're now proposing that to be brick. So, some comments on this south end needing a little bit of work, this east end needing a little bit of work. That's where we focused our efforts, when it comes to this material application. And then looking at the northeast corner with this bypass pedestrian bike path, going all the way around the building. Not only does it, does it allow more space for bikes and pedestrians to use, but it's also flat across the site, or relatively flat. So if you can imagine, instead of going down to the roundabout from the Eden side and then back up Arcadia, this allows a fairly flat and fairly gentle transition through the site. Looking straight east from the opposite side, opening up our courtyard in that public park to the, to the neighborhood, our retail space on the north side, and then our, our lobby space on the, at the roundabout. Really, really trying to activate all sides right here. And then again, same view, highlighting the retail space and these stepbacks in this north side. So with that, we'll answer any questions.
Good. Yeah, thank you. Number Ursur, you want to lead us off?
Can you talk a little bit about the 14 affordable units that will be made available? You know, the range of bedrooms that you're offering, and what the affordable units will look like?
Sure, yes, thank you for the question. So we will have 10% of the units at 50% AMI, and that'll be 10% of the unit mix. So, if we have 10 studios, it would be one studio. If we have 20, two bedrooms, it would be two. We work very closely with all the different municipalities to make sure that we're adhering to all of your policies to, to meet that. I know there was a question at Planning Commission about parking, and if that's included or not, we will follow whatever the city, whatever the city's policy is for the affordable housing.
I did learn that it is that we have parking included with the affordability, and all amenities need to be included as well.
Yes, and, and that, that's always the case. Some cities, we're working with the city now where it's 50% of the AMI, we're working, or 50%, because it lines up with the rent as well, and then we're working with another, another city where it's included, and in other words, not. So we're, of course, open to whatever the policy is, we'll meet that.
Okay. And we are doubling the size of the land essentially. You heard my little calculation. Any way you can do more than 14 affordable units? I mean, we're giving you a big, just think about that.
We will take it into consideration.
There are going to be electric chargers?
Yes, yes, we'll have.
Are those, those will be available how? Like, first come, first served?
You know, we've done it both ways. We've done it where we have some that are, we, we do have a pretty significant amount of public parking on the site. We've, we have at least 15 dedicated retail stalls, which could be flexed to more than 20 or 30 if we see less demand for the, for the parking for the residential. Sometimes we'll provide the electric charging stations in the hourly parking. We'll also provide it in the residential parking as well. We, I would say typically like to see, for 136 units, we probably would want 20 to 30 electric vehicle charging stations in the project, give or take.
And there would be a percentage that were made available to people in affordable units?
I would assume we would, we would, again, work with whatever the policy says, but also would probably say 10% of them are, you know, available for those units as well.
Okay, because there are some reasonably priced electric cars?
Sure.
Okay. I think I remember hearing you had a program to help the entities that are in the current commercial building find a new place to go? Maybe that wasn't, I watch a lot of, or, okay, maybe that wasn't.
No, we do not. We do not currently own the building. Most of the tenants in the building are on short-term leases, but that, that would be something that we wouldn't be a part of.
Okay. Sorry about that, thank you. That is all I have.
Thank you.
Great on the line, Henry Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, two questions. One was, in the MINDOT review, they talked about the sound, and the sound off the highway. Can you tell us what you're going to do to mitigate the noise, the highway noise for the residents?
Yeah, great question. I, I forgot, we did talk about that at Planning Commission as well. First and foremost, we, we need apartments that people want to live in. So sound is, is a big deal, and we have several projects that we've developed, both here locally as well as across the country, where we're adjacent to on-ramps, off-ramps, and highways. Typically, that leads to a higher STC rating on those windows, which essentially means, you know, you take the study and you find out where is your sound the biggest issue, and you increase the rating on those windows, so that you're getting less sound coming off of those areas. So we'll, we'll work with, with, you know, a consultant to figure out where is the sound most coming. We probably have it for sure on the east, and probably that southeast, and maybe the north too. So, we'll, we'll certainly have to look at that. But at the end of the day, we, we do not want units that people move in and say, "This is too loud."
And so for the ground-level units as well, there's going to be plantings to mitigate that, or?
Yeah, there's a decent amount of existing vegetation there, and I know that one of the conditions was that we maintain that. You know, absolutely, we will do that. I think it's important to say, "Maintain or replace," just in case it's damaged, you know, we will replace that. That's an important part of, really, the whole site is, you know, in sketch plan, we didn't show a lot of the landscaping, and hopefully you've seen that we've shown a lot more landscaping in our, in our new plans. You know, we want a lot of green space around the building, and that buffer, you know, between, not only the highway, but just kind of around the entire site. And I know we talked about the off-ramp to the north. Certainly want to buffer that as well, as, as, as long as it's an off-ramp, which hopefully isn't for too long.
Okay, terrific. Well, that's a good segue to my second question. For this public park and for the roof, have you considered, is the public park over parking? So you couldn't have grass there, is that?
Yes, it's, it's over, partially over the ramp down in the parking.
Okay, so, have you considered a green roof in any way? And is there any way to make that public park a little bit greener?
We can definitely look at, at doing that. You know, this was, sorry. This was a first pass at that public park, and so taking your comments into consideration, we'll definitely look at adding more green space to that.
Yeah. I've got a tour of the green roof on the, on the downtown library in Minneapolis, and they've had it for years. It's really low cost, so I, I'm a big fan all of a sudden of green roofs.
Yeah.
But that would help with the, the feeling of it being a potential heat island, everything. So any way you can do that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'll also point out to our amenity deck, where we do have a lot of green space and plantings kind of planned in that region as well.
Terrific. All right, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for the questions.
Number Pierce.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. One is just, for the public park, how do you see that being utilized?
Well, we're hoping that we could kind of anchor it with a piece of public art in the park, and like I said, there's a lot of topography happening at that location. So we're connecting it to the sidewalk where we can, but then we're also kind of terracing it up and down, hoping that it just kind of feels almost amphitheater-like, you know, and it's 100% connected to the sidewalk, whether it be by steps or a level crosswalk. And then, you know, these plantings kind of create the edge, and so what we're trying to do is really create a little outdoor public room right there, that, that, yeah, faces Arcadia. And so it, it'll just feel, you know, our hope is that it'll just feel very welcoming to anybody that's walking up and down Arcadia.
Well, I do appreciate some of the changes you've made on Arcadia to activate and utilize what we're trying to do across the street there. It's just always been, I think, challenging to have a public park in a market building, and then assume that the public will come over there, right? It just, when you, when you build it, it's going to feel like it's a park for the structure, right, for the residents of the building. And so really thinking about programming or activation.
Sure.
To also ensure that people feel open to utilizing it. And so that's one. The second question I had, you know, I think it's actually kind of comical on the bike lanes. When you're showing the bike lanes in the, the rear, even your rendering, like, I just, I don't see people doing that. And so I, it, when you, when you think about the bike lanes, are you, are you really envisioning that people would use those bike lanes behind the building?
We hope so, yeah. I mean, we're, if we're talking about this pedestrian bridge potentially happening over Highway 100, connecting right here.
Sure, yeah.
Running right past our, our project, we're, we're planning on that happening in the future. So that's really what we're saying by including these bike lanes, is that now we're, we've already provided it. Once that bridge comes, then they can just connect right into our network.
Okay. I know you're, you're proposing, was it 10 feet, 8 feet? Something like that?
Eight to 10 feet, yeah, where we can, yep.
And so maybe there's, if it's 10 feet, maybe there's, I don't know, striping you can do there, or what have you.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
But I just see people walking, and then they're walking into bike traffic coming right at them. That's just kind of how it feels when I look at it. I do like the idea of having the ADA-compliant, the walkway, again, to activate, that this is an entire ecosystem here, that we, we hope everybody will want to come to the Grand View yard, and it's all kind of a contiguous piece of property that people may utilize in different ways, whether they're at the restaurant, or maybe over at the park, or what have you. So I do like that you're thinking about how to activate that. And then I, this really isn't a question, I have to spend some time thinking about this, but the first time we looked at this, I thought, "It's too big for the site." And I remember talking about, "Well, if the slip goes away, right, could that create more green space?" I remember having those conversations. I was not a big, I wasn't excited about making it taller. So I was the opposite, thinking, "Well, is there a way we can make it smaller from grade?" And so you've done that by burying the parking. But this time, when I looked at it, it felt different to me. And I'm thinking that maybe because of the front, where you have the retail space, you've adjusted some of the, the, not the setbacks, but what do you call the?
Stepbacks.
The stepback, yeah. And so, when I'm envisioning myself standing in front of it, like, it doesn't feel like it crowds Arcadia the way that it felt to me the first time we looked at it. And so I, I appreciate that, the thought that you've gone through to, to try to address some of those issues as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it.
Number Agnew.
Thank you. So as we're talking through this initially, I, one, just really appreciated hiding the parking. I am so much happier to see a public park space rather than surface parking. Agree with Member Pierce of thinking about ways to activate it, but much prefer to see community area as opposed to parking. And this is kind of a question, but I also mean for it to be a discussion point, because I don't know the exact answer. But typically, there's studies that show that when you can decouple parking from the, the rent of an apartment building, it helps really drive down that dependency on vehicles, especially where we have areas that we're trying to encourage more public transportation. But I think that there was also some good discussion here earlier about parking for the affordable units. And so I don't know the, the right answer, and I think potentially, it's a, it's a world where you do something for those affordable units that's different than the rest of the building, but just something to think about, and I don't, I don't know if you've already thought about that.
We, we have, on almost all of our projects, the parking for the market-rate apartments is always separate. So you've got your rent, and then you have, if you want a parking stall, you can take one, and it's at, you know, X rate. And then the affordable, again, depending on the city, if it's included, then it's included.
Perfect, thank you. You've already solved it, I appreciate that. So, related to apartments, I understand the existing legislation that makes it difficult for developers to create condos right now. But we've also been talking about having more ownership opportunity across the city. And so I'm curious, is this being constructed in a way that could lend itself, after the 10 years or whatever have you, to converting to a ownership model within this building?
It's a good question. My attorney would probably advise me how to answer this one carefully. I think all buildings have the ability, after the 10-year liability, I think wood-frame buildings in general have a little bit more of a challenge in that there's not as much flexibility in, say, a concrete building where you can kind of, you know, I don't want to say wipe out the existing walls that are there, but with a wood-frame structure, your, your units are your units, and maybe a studio isn't always as attractive as a condo as it is an apartment. So, I think all buildings have the ability to be converted. I think wood-frame buildings aren't as good a candidates as maybe a concrete building.
And just for clarification, this is a wood-frame building?
Yes, apologies, yes. This is five levels of wood over a podium.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Those are the only questions I had today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know the height of the building relative to the height of the Jerry's office building?
We're lower.
We do.
Yeah, so.
No, we have that graphic.
Right here.
Oh, there it is. Okay, you're shorter than the Jerry's.
We are.
Office building.
Taller than Applewood Point and the other development.
Oh, yes. We're, we're shorter than Jerry's building. We're significantly shorter than the Mason Green building and slightly taller than the Applewood Point building across the street. So if you see the top of the graphic there, those are the three different lines of those three projects.
Yeah, good. Thanks for that. My colleagues have made some great points, I think. And to segue off some of them or amplify them, though I, you know, when you were here the first time, and I think Member Pierce talked about this, it felt like the building was kind of hanging over the street. So you'd walk by and you'd look up and this big building would be hanging over you. But I have to say that what you've done is, is remarkable transformation. Even though the setback doesn't match up with what we like to see for POD, you've created the illusion of more setback. I'm looking at the rendering view from the northwest. By having that retail with all the glass and the park setback, I mean, and the building setback, you, and then on the other sides of the building, it's the same thing. You, you've created this remarkable sense that the building now fits on the property and it's in scale for the, for the property. And I think you, you should really feel good about that. As you, Mr. Growth is an architect, ought to feel particularly good about it and proud of the fact that you listened to the planning commission and the city council members about that. Because though I would have liked to see more green space in a taller building, I understand people's reticence about that, you've created a level of comfort for me here, too, that I didn't expect to see when, when I heard that you had, you know, that the footprint was slightly different, but you had reoriented everything. So it's, and it has a really, almost from all sides, it has a really welcoming sort of feeling. It kind of, it reaches out and embraces you, a little bit like the entrance here to City Hall. You know, it's, it's open and it's beckoning and welcoming. People feel comfortable coming in.
Well, thank you for those comments. We're really excited about, we think it really fits the context of, of the neighborhood. And I think when we put the graphic of the project across the street, we really started to feel what Arcadia was going to feel like. And that, that got us really excited just about how this whole area is transforming. And now you're really kind of creating, you know, a residential neighborhood that has kind of piecemealed itself together in a way that really works well together. So appreciate those comments. And we did look at the, the height and there were some challenges. You know, we still had to park it and that, that became a big challenge. All of a sudden, your whole site was a parking lot or garage. You had the density towards the highway, but how do you park it?
Yeah, so I'm glad, I'm glad you made that point because I think we all appreciate the fact that you've got the parking underground, unlike what we see over there now where it's all on the surface property. Member Jackson mentioned the, could you get more green space in that proposed public park? You can, you can see more green space just by going up to St. Louis Park City Hall and seeing that green roof they've got there. It looks like a big yard to the, to the west of the, of the main entrance. But having said that, I will say that it seems to me, like Member Pierce pointed out, that there's some potential for some real synergies between what we're trying to do over in that park across the street and having an amphitheater here for performance purposes, small performances, where, you know, we, we, we work together in partnership potentially, you know, or maybe it becomes a city park. I don't know. That's something to think about, too, I guess. But I think it's, it's, it's got some really interesting possibilities that allow us to think about collectively not having it feel like it just belongs to the development. And that's an important just fact or a point that I think Member Pierce made. Yeah, in a way, it feels a little bit to me like Petey Plaza downtown, even though that's more on a single level. There are, there's some movement up and down in there, but it has a little bit of that same feeling. And then the noise abatement, whoever raised that issue, I thought that was a good one that, of course, you want people to move in there and be happy once they move in and not be calling and saying, wait a minute, the noise decibels in my, my apartment facing Highway 100. I know I got a little better rental rate over here, but hey, come on.
Yeah, we don't want to replace all the windows after we built it.
Yeah. So you, you know what you need to do. And I'm told now that stick built, you can create just about as effective, or maybe as effective, sound barrier system as you could with concrete. So, and you, you would know that based on the material world that you work in. So I think those are our collective comments here, unless anybody else has anything that, any of these comments prompted you to ask another question. This is a public hearing, and I'm going to open it up now for public testimony, whether folks are in the audience or online. And you guys go ahead and sit down and stand by.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
There may be some questions that pop up that we want to have answered while we're in the process of this public hearing. So let's, let's open this up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding this matter?
Hello again. Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue. I know this piece of property quite well. My insurance agent, I think their office is still in there. They haven't moved out yet. I used to go to a couple of different dentists in that building. And I used to bike often to my dental appointments. I understand exactly why that bike path would go on the east side around the corner and then go on the north side of the building. You're staying at more of the same level. It makes good sense, except for that turn at the northeast corner. I can see that as being a crash waiting to happen. A bike into a person, a bike into another bike. Something needs to be done differently there. It's just too, too much not being able to see far enough ahead if you're on a bicycle. Let's see. I am wondering when the traffic study for the area was done. Was it done during COVID? Was it done before Applewood Point was approved? Was it done before or after Maison Green was approved? Were those major projects incorporated into it? So I'm just throwing that out there. The timing, I still think, is really difficult with 50th Bridge over 100 being done and construction in Applewood Point. I'd like to see this happen maybe two years down the road, not, not immediately. And also, you have a big roof on this building. What about solar? Why can't we require as part of this PU rezoning, you have to put solar panels on the roof? We're trying to be a green city. We're going to have charging stations for cars. Why aren't we talking about solar panels right there on the roof? That would make so much sense. In the future, east side frontage road, that's a definite? Or is that a, I, I'm a little confused here if that's definitely happening or is that on the wish list? If I had a really big wish, I would wish that the so-called lid be done over Highway 100. And then everyone would want to be in those ground floor, your own door apartments on the east side of the building. That would be the nicest place to be. So let's bring that one up again. I was up in Duluth just this last weekend, driving along Superior Avenue, and it wiggles and turns, goes over 35, and you don't even know the freeway is underneath you. It is marvelous. It works so well, and it makes so much sense for Edina to do that between 50th and Eden Avenue, to do the lid. And it does not cost taxpayers money. I talked to the M dot guys about it, and they explained how financing works. It does not come out of Edina citizens' taxpayer pockets. They've got it all figured out. So let's bring that one back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weston.
Good evening.
Members, my name is Steve Brown. I live at 5528 Halifax Lane. I think the quality of discussion this evening has been excellent. Really interesting questions. I want to step back just for a moment and say that part of the reason why the comprehensive plan moved in the direction it did to go to mixed-use center was to try to create an area that potentially could have more energy, more activity, more people. And now you have a project being presented to you that I think addresses what you were trying to do there. It brings you more people. This is 136 apartments being plunked down next to the Grand View Yard, which everyone feels is a well-done concept, but it doesn't have the energy yet that people are looking for. And what you need is more people. Instead of having an office building where everybody leaves at night, you'll have people who will come in and take advantage of this area. And not only that, they're going to have a retail space that hopefully brings more people into the area. So I think this is a very exciting proposal from a 20,000-foot perspective. The other thing that I find fascinating about this is that we're trying to find great locations for affordable housing. This location is right next to a bank, a grocery store, a drugstore, a hardware store, all within walking distance. If you wanted to try to pick an ideal spot for affordable housing, this would certainly be one of those. We're only getting 14 units. That's the way the policy works, but it's a terrific place for those 14 units. So I would urge you to support this project.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else in the audience wish to testify? Look at that face. Outside. No, okay. That, the comments by Ms. Weston or Mr. Brown prompt any further questions for staff or the applicant from council members? I think we could answer that question about when the traffic study was done. I wonder if you go ahead and do that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and the council. With COVID, so 2020 and 2021, those were, most industries aren't using those traffic counts. So we're typically going back to 19 or earlier to determine when we've had counts on the relevant roadways, and then supplementing that data with 2022. And then all the traffic models of recent analysis has considered all the developments that have been done. And then we've even worked with our planning department and economic development manager to determine what are possible improvements. So we've also, you know, we had the Perkins identified, we had this site identified and the whole public works site identified, and put some reasonable numbers on densities there and ran that with the traffic counting and the traffic analysis.
So as we always do, we not only look at existing traffic, but we look at anticipated traffic and layer in the projects that are in the approval process, if they've been approved.
Correct.
Anticipating those volumes as well and determining what the traffic study shows for the particular area.
Correct. And then an overall growth factor for the district as a whole.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay, now, what we're proposing in this matter is what we've usually been doing, and that is postpone a decision on this matter until our first meeting in September. So is there a motion to close the public hearing at noon on August 21st and continue the action to the September 5th, 2023 city council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Member Pierce, second by Member Agnew, to close the public hearing in this matter at, at noon on August 21st, 2023, and continue the action to September 5th, 2023. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed, carried. We have one more public hearing matter this evening. City Manager Scott Neal has this matter, and this is a proposed interim ordinance prohibiting the operation of a cannabis business in the city of Edina during this so-called moratorium period. Thank you, gentlemen, and we'll see you again.
Thank you, Your Honor. This public hearing is to consider the adoption of ordinance 2020, 2023-13, which is an interim ordinance that prohibits the operation of cannabis businesses. This is a statutory public hearing. It was required by the cannabis legalization law. We had a discussion about this proposal at the previous council meeting in August. We scheduled this public hearing for tonight. This action, which is being taken by many cities across, across Minnesota this, this week and in previous, and in the previous month, provides a city an opportunity to take stock of what its zoning ordinance and its other legal processes are around law enforcement, public health, planning and zoning, et cetera, to, to prepare for the eventual full legalization of cannabis consumption in our state and in particular in our city. We look at, I'm looking at some different processes for how we might go about creating a recommendation for the council, but we'd like you to have this public hearing this evening, and if possible, to proceed with a vote to approve the ordinance tonight.
Questions for Manager Neal? Is it the intention, intention of this ordinance to be in effect during the period of time of the moratorium or until such time as the council acts between now and I think, what was, what was it, 2020, end of 2024, 25?
We would anticipate that this, that we would bring back recommendations to you prior, certainly prior to the expiration of this moratorium. And if you adopted those recommendations, whatever form they're in, ordinance or resolution changes, we would also end the moratorium at that time.
All right. Other questions for Manager Neal at this point in time? All right, this is a public hearing matter. I'm going to open this up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding this proposed interim ordinance prohibiting the operation of a cannabis business in the city of Edina? Hearing no one and seeing no one coming forward, do we have anybody on the line that wishes to testify regarding this matter?
I don't have anyone on the line, but I do think we should wait a minute before moving on. There is a short delay in the broadcast. And so if we wait a minute, we'll ensure people have adequate time to call in. My clock shows that it's seven, or 7:28. 9:28. I'll come back to you at 9:29 or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
I would note, Mr. Mayor, that we did have a Better Together public hearing comment opportunity available for residents. It was put up right after the previous council meeting, and we did not have any participation in the, in the event.
Do you have anything else you wanted to add to fill the time?
I don't think so, no.
Yeah, that was a good one.
Thanks.
Yeah, I take it Mr. Kendall was involved in crafting this ordinance?
Indeed, he was, yes.
Anybody on the council want to call in? No, okay.
The longest minute of the day has now ended, and I still do not have a call, so I think it's safe for you to move forward.
All right. We can have some discussion on this, although we've had a discussion at the prior meeting, and it may be a straightforward situation because we had the moratorium in place. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-13, which is an interim ordinance prohibiting the operation of a cannabis business in the city of Edina, and also grant second reading of that proposed ordinance?
So moved. A second?
A motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Agnew, to adopt a motion to approve ordinance 2023-13 on a second reading basis in that interim ordinance prohibits the operation of a cannabis business in the city of Edina. Is there discussion around the matter? Is there discussion around the matter? This is a voice vote. All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, that completes our public hearing portion of the agenda. We are now moving on to reports and recommendations. And the first matter in that portion of the agenda is due to the generosity, sort of the ongoing generosity of our residents in whether individual or companies. We've got proposed donations to the city that we need to deal with and approve. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-52, accepting donations on behalf of the city of Edina?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2023-52, accepting donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of that Resolution 2023-52, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. That resolution embodies in it donations to the city of Edina, to the Park and Rec Department, by the Edina Girls Fast Pitch Association, a very, very generous gift of $3,200 for a bench at Pamela Park. And then Michael and Nicole Cansealosi, Michael and Nicole Cansealosi, another $3,200 for a bench at Weber Park. So thanks to those folks and that organization for those very, very generous gifts. And then the Edina Senior Center had some in-kind gifts and some cash gifts from various people and businesses. And then the Edina Eden Prairie Explorer Post had some travel expense for some of those young people. And the Edina Crime Prevention Fund donated $3,500 for that travel for those young people involved in the Explorer Post. So thanks to everybody involved for their, for your generosity. Now, we've got a, next matter is approval of a summary publication for ordinance 2023-13, which is the interim ordinance prohibiting the operation of a cannabis business in the city of Edina. We need to publish that as part of the action we just took here a moment ago. Manager Neal, did you want to add anything there?
Nothing to add, other than this is just the summary publication, so it's a compressed version.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve summary publication for ordinance 2023-13? And that is the interim ordinance prohibiting the operation of cannabis business in the city of Edina.
So moved. A second?
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And next, we have Resolution 2023-46, which would authorize a staff submittal of a comprehensive plan amendment to the Metropolitan Council for the Cahill District Area Plan. And Addison Lewis, our community development coordinator, is with us this evening. And we have our outside consultant with us as well, Gaila Mays from Bolton &amp; Mink. And they're going to make a presentation, and then we're going to entertain adopting a motion around the Resolution 2023-46. So go ahead, Mr. Lewis. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you mentioned, we are seeking your authorization tonight to submit a comprehensive plan amendment to the Met Council for the Cahill District Area Plan. The city council, you all held the public hearing for this item at the July 18th city council meeting, and then continued the item on August 2nd to allow staff some additional time to look into some questions. And so I thought I could kind of start out here by just addressing some of the questions from previous meetings. So one of the first questions that came up was about, with this being such a large document, are developers going to be able to easily look at it and find, you know, what they can do on a particular property and know kind of what's expected of them? So we talked about that a bit and came up with the idea of creating a developer overview handout that we thought could kind of consolidate a lot of the information that would be applicable to developers into just a few pages and would give kind of an overview of different issues and opportunities, give an overview of what's expected in terms of land use, and potentially have, let's see, this identifies some of the desired development outcome, so this could sort of serve like a checklist. This is just a draft. This wouldn't be considered part of the plan, but it's a way we could kind of address that comment, I think. There were also some questions about stormwater and whether or not the plan adequately addresses stormwater. And the plan does address that. It is a significant barrier to redevelopment, and I think it emphasizes that the desire is for stormwater to be handled on a district level. That would sort of serve the dual function of both providing flood mitigation and also potentially serving as an amenity or a public gathering space. So this is talked about a little bit on pages 45 and 52 in the plan, but the plan doesn't give a specific roadmap of how we would do that. That is not included in the scope of this plan, but it is recommended as a next step in our implementation section, that we further study the stormwater issues in the area and come up with a plan of how we're going to handle that. And then kind of along those lines, Councilmember Agnew, at the last meeting, you had asked about, you know, what is like the big idea in this plan? And you referred to a graphic that I think you saw during your time on the working group. I think it might have been this graphic here that showed kind of the creek being rerouted through the district to sort of serve as an amenity. And you're right, we didn't include that graphic in the plan. We certainly could, but the idea of considering rerouting the creek to turn it into an amenity and also provide flood storage, that is an idea that is still included in the plan. That's addressed on page 32. So that is still in there as a potential big idea. Again, the plan doesn't lay out a roadmap of how we would do that. That would kind of be that next step, where we further study the stormwater here. And then Councilmember Risher, I know you had some concerns about those five parcels along Ohms, going from industrial to mixed use, and I can tell you that the working group really wrestled with that too and kind of what was the right balance. This is ultimately what they landed on. I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer. There's trade-offs to both. Certainly, you all, as a city council, could kind of come up with a different conclusion of what the best land use is for that, if you choose. And then there was also a question about, you know, what would be the implications for traffic if those five parcels were to go to multifamily? And so I met with Director Milner, and we chatted about that, just to confirm that traffic would not be an issue. A street like that could potentially handle up to 15,000 trips a day. And even if every one of those parcels redeveloped at the maximum density, it would likely only generate somewhere between 5,000 and 7,000 trips a day. Additionally, with each redevelopment, they would be required to do a traffic study. So if there were any issues, we would have an opportunity to address it then as well. So, do you have anything you wanted to say? Add on to that?
About the interjurisdictional?
Just about any previous questions? If not, that was kind of all the questions we wanted to respond to, so we could be happy to answer any other questions you have or just turn it back to you for discussion.
Thanks, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Mays, is there anything you wanted to add?
I was just going to say, given the interjurisdictional?
We can't hear you. You'll need the microphone.
Sorry, apologies. I was just saying that there is some housekeeping items related to the interjurisdiction review. This plan was, of course, routed via the Met Council processes surrounding cities and communities. I think most of them were small clarifying comments, and a lot of them relate to some of the topics that have already been covered, but just for the sake of completeness, we have, that was part of the previous record as well. And I think that otherwise Addison did a great job of covering it.
What's the process when it goes over to the Met Council?
They will have up to 60 days to review it. Then we would kind of find out if they've approved it or if they have any changes, and then it would be brought back to you all for final adoption. So this won't be the last time you'd see it. Right now, you're just authorizing us to submit it to them, but then the final version would be brought back to you for final approval.
So if the Met Council makes any recommended changes, do we go back to our neighbors then for their further comment? Because don't neighboring jurisdictions have a voice here too?
They do, yep. So, and we submit all those comments to the Met Council. Those affected jurisdictions, they submit their comments to us, and then we're required to submit that. So if there was a, well, and I think a lot of the comments we got were pretty minor, and so we are planning to incorporate those. There should be an attachment in your packet that shows each of those comments and how we're planning to address it. So we would do that before we submit to the Met Council. So if there were any additional changes that Met Council wanted to see, you know, if it was more than just a minor change, we could talk about how we might handle that, if we would, you know, kind of hold additional public hearings, but if it's, if it would be pretty minor, we likely would not do that.
So this step is to send it to the Met Council for their observations on it. Still needs to come back to us for final approval?
Correct.
All right. Okay. Questions from council members? Member Risher?
Do you have the map that shows the zoning changes available?
Yes.
And also, although Ohms Avenue may be able to handle residential traffic, I'm looking at page 19 of the district profile. Additionally, many entities, and this is under weaknesses and challenges of the district. Additionally, many entities originally located to the district for its industrial zoning. Industries in the district are concerned about the further development of residential and retail properties adjacent to industrial sites and within the district. So that is a concern. Whereas retail operations are already creating challenges for large employers, included in these are on-street parking issues, where currently the potential legal but unexpected overuse of on-street parking by retail customers is creating problems for industrial employees and deliveries. Noise complaints and pedestrian freight vehicle collisions could become prevalent issues as well. Okay? And so that is an issue. And I really didn't see much analysis at all in the report about, you know, changing those. And it is to go to office residential. Office is already allowed in the industrial zone, so really the only motivation is to allow residential there. And I just feel like there hasn't been enough analysis. And I'm wondering if my colleagues would support a possible change here so that we keep those five parcels zoned industrial? Maybe just think about that. The other thing is retail was brought up as an issue, and this goes back to a comment earlier tonight. We now, when it comes to industrial zoning, allow retail to the public in our industrial buildings. That is what happened with the drooling moose variance that was granted. And if you look at the code, and here, the law can be interpreted in different ways. That's why, you know, the legal profession is flourishing. But when I look at that language and I see that retail is only supposed to be offered within the building and there's not so supposed to be signage, and you have that whole tradition of allowing retail to the employees, like a little cafeteria or something like that, we are completely breaking away from that. And we are saying that you can have retail sales in the industrial zone to the public anywhere in the industrial zone. And that does not come to the city council. It just goes as a variance to the Planning Commission. So there's a lot going on here that could really change the dynamic. That's a conversation for another day, but I just bring that up because I do think it could change the environment. But really, if we could at least, you know, consider, I don't know if any of my colleagues would be interested in considering that change.
I'm going to turn to Director Teague here on that issue that Member Risher just raised.
I would just add that commercial uses are allowed in the industrial park today. They can't exceed more than 10% of the square footage of the building, so the principal use is still officer-industrial. The variances were in regard to having a front door entrance rather than getting to that retail space within the building. But the use, the uses are allowed there today.
So, Lewis, anything else on that issue?
Other than, you know, a lot of, you know, the specifics about types of uses, that is really addressed in the zoning ordinance, and, you know, this won't directly change that. Again, an implementation step is to go and take a look at our zoning and see if there's tweaks we need to make to make it consistent with the plan, if we want to do that. So I think, you know, those discussions would happen at a future time when we're amending the zoning ordinance.
Does anyone care to comment on Member Risher's inquiry about the possibility of leaving the cul-de-sac on Ohms, which butts up against 70th Street in its present zoning configuration, as opposed to suggesting that it could be, at least from a compliance standpoint, designated office residential? For me personally, you know, I understood the concern and I kind of joined in asking the question, what about the traffic? Because I, one of the owners of one of those buildings back there, I was back there several times when we were doing that mixed-use project. I talked about it as the sort of ultimate mixed-use of baseball batting cages and a crematorium. But when you get back into there, that little cul-de-sac by the creek, you could see where that could be a significant spot for housing, an important part for housing, at least for consideration of it. And I feel like our colleagues on the Planning Commission and in our community worked hard on this plan for a couple of years and didn't go to the heart of the district, which I think is, the comment that Member Risher read, I interpret that as being, be careful about doing housing in the heart of the commercial industrial district. I agree 100% with that. We want that commercial industrial zone to be a strong part of our tax base. But on the periphery and a couple little minor locations in that 400 acres, to be thinking about at least the possibility of housing theoretically being appropriate, I guess I'd be okay with that and follow the advice of our working group. Other comments from other council members?
Other questions?
Okay. Member Risher, anything you want, more you want to add on that? I know it's a concern of yours, so I think everybody's trying to think that through and be sensitive to it.
All right, well, should I make a motion and we can just?
You could, to see if you get a second.
So I move that those five parcels along Ohms Lane remain industrially zoned. Is there a?
Everybody understand the motion? Is there a second? Okay. Motion fails for lack of a second. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-46, authorizing staff submittal of a comprehensive plan amendment to the Metropolitan Council for the Cahill District Area Plan?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2023-46, which would authorize our staff to submit a comprehensive plan amendment to the Metropolitan Council for the Cahill District Area Plan. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think we'd like to have some discussion.
Yes, very good. Member Jackson?
Oh, sure, thank you. I wanted to let you clean up as a former co-chair. So, yeah, this, at first, I want to just applaud everybody who worked on this. I love when the community gets together and volunteers their time to go through the in-depth process and then to comment along, the other members who come in and comment along the way. This process is just really high on community engagement, and I want to thank everybody, including Member Agnew, for their work on this. I'm satisfied with the stormwater implementation. I love the fact that we're going to be working with Nine Mile Creek Watershed District on how this fits into their overall plans. I'm really satisfied with the engineering part of that and the connectivity. We've got complete streets to ensure that everybody remains safe and that we can get along with trucks and bicycles, and it's going to be a safe thing. The story of this project, to me, is threefold. One is keeping the industrial area, two, improving the connectivity, and then three, you know, managing the challenges with the stormwater and the sewer. And everybody did a fantastic job into going into depth and really stress, looking where the stressors are and finding solutions. The measure, I pulled up my draft, and the measuring progress page, I think, is just, it's a beautiful work. It has the principles and the values, ways that we can see those being played out, and then ways to measure whether we're going to be effective or not. And I am so thankful for that. I think that's a really useful and nice piece of work. And I want to thank the, our forefathers, who made this an industrial area. And I'm so excited about having that industrial capacity and the more intense business uses down there, and I'm very thankful that this working group kept those. And I'm really excited about the potential for that part of our economy here in Edina. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you, guys, for facilitating it, and I'm just really excited about this.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Jackson, Member Agnew.
Thank you. I'm going to kick it off with a question. So help me understand how you think the Met Council will interpret this type of a plan where it still contains the four scenarios, but one is identified as that preferred scenario? And the first phase of that question is, how does the Met Council interpret that? And then the second phase is then, what do we do with that as a city when there are still four alternatives laid out within this plan?
Sure. The four scenarios are included in the plan, just kind of for context, to show kind of what was considered and discussed, but it does move forward with option A. So that's why on the attachment in your packet that identifies the actual changes to the comp plan, it does make land use changes that are consistent with that option A. So we would be moving forward with just the one. Those are just, the other three are just kind of in there for background information.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies a lot for me. So I was a part of this working group. I served as co-chair with David Alkire prior to being elected to the city council. And I first got involved with this because of the amount of opportunity that exists within this area. And there's 380 approximately acres. And the idea was, how can we set forward the vision of how this area will evolve over the next 20, 30 years, right? There have been multiple comprehensive plans now that have said, we need a plan for this area, we need this, we need this. And what, that's why we came together with, as a group, to do this. And so I really am interested in and want to be a part of approving this type of plan. But I'm saddened that I think this plan is really doing the smallest amount possible. I believe that we started out with a lot of conversations of like, what's the big idea? Like, how could this take shape? And this is 380 acres of amazing opportunity within the city. And I believe that the plan of, and granted, like, there's some evolution, but the plan is really keep a lot of it the same. Let's do some small incremental changes. And I think that being a part of some of these conversations throughout the process, though admittedly not all of them, because once I was elected, I did step back from chairing this position. What I saw was an evolution of thinking of, where is the big idea and what can we do within this area, to one based in fears, concerns about, well, what about the schools? Or what about our services as a community? And yes, those are essential components to who we are as Edina, right? Like, we pride ourselves in our schools and our services, and those are the things that we all love seeing ranked highly in our quality of life survey. But having a plan that evolves 380 acres does not mean that those things are going downhill, or that we can't do so with keeping the high standards that we have for those things as a community. When you think about schools, right, we're talking again, decades of progress, we can ebb and flow, we can build more schools, we can evolve what we need to as a city. When you look at Edina, right, we're not all of a sudden the biggest city who doesn't know how to, like, accommodate schools or services. They're examples of how do we solve this with additional residents? And I think, too, when you look at the fact, and I think this was a statistic we got earlier today at our work session, over the last 10 years, the population of Edinas increased 13%. And so if we were to kind of straight-line that and we increase another 13% over the next decade, or 26, I know it doesn't quite work out that way percentage-wise, over the next 20 years, where are we thinking those people will go? And I understand and appreciate the need to maintain a balance of different types of zoning and different economic levers that we have within a city. But I did see, and I observed firsthand, a shift in being fearful of envisioning large-scale change even over a timeframe as wide as it we're seeing. So because of that, like, I'm just not happy with where this ended, particularly with us landing on scenario A. And so this isn't ultimately a plan that I'm proud of and I feel like I'm happy to put my name on. So for that reason, I will not be voting to support it. Thank you.
Other comments? This requires a four-fifths vote to go to the council. All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve this Resolution 2023-46. Although, any further conversation, those in favor of adoption of the resolution 2023-46, say aye?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Motion fails. All right. Thank you. The next matter we have is a motion to approve ordinance 2023-12 concerning the use of cannabis and hemp in public. We talked about this last meeting, and then we talked about granting second reading, held off on it. Manager Neal, do you want to take this up again for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance that was considered for first reading at the August 2nd council meeting. This is an ordinance that prohibits the consumption and use of cannabis and hemp in all public places. It was drafted by the city attorney. It's comparable to what other communities are doing with this subject. We are asking for council approval of this ordinance this evening with the idea that as we move forward with the discussion under the moratorium, that we may, we may come back and ask you to amend this at some point. But today, we're starting with an ordinance that has been drafted as broadly as possible for legal prohibition.
Questions for Manager Neal? Member Jackson?
Yes, can you tell me the level of penalty on this? What this is really comparable to?
I think I'm going to ask our city attorney to answer that question.
Mayor, Member Jackson, this would be a petty misdemeanor, so it's not considered a crime under Minnesota law. There'll be no criminal record of it. The maximum penalty would be a $300 fine. There'll be no probation, so it's the lowest offense level possible under Minnesota law.
So is this equivalent to drinking in a public park, or smoking in a public park, or both?
I'm not sure what the offense level is for those. This would be roughly equivalent to, like, traffic tickets are often petty misdemeanors?
Well, I'd like to know what the penalty is for smoking in a public park or drinking in a public park before I approve this.
I imagine those are probably petty misdemeanors, but I have to look that up.
Okay.
I thought it was a gross misdemeanor, but maybe I'm wrong. Let's check the.
We'll check.
Penalty provision on it.
Thank you.
I should also just note that the new legislation, this is the only penalty option for this offense. Cities either have the option to not pass an ordinance at all, or pass an ordinance making it a petty misdemeanor, but the cities do not have an option under the new state statute to make it any offense level other than a petty misdemeanor.
So it's a petty misdemeanor?
Correct.
You still want to know what the penalty is for smoking?
Well, I'll look it up, I guess, myself later, because we don't have an option. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think I was at a meeting in another city and they were taking this up as well, and there was the same discussion, no option. This is what the penalty is, you know, a minor sort of penalty. Other questions? Yes.
Thank you. I have a question, and it builds off of Member Jackson's question, and particularly in the memo that we have, it does state, it could be argued that the city's current ordinances prohibiting smoking are sufficient to cover the use of cannabis and hemp products. And so I just, I want to reiterate, there are already ordinances in place in our city that prohibit smoking in all of the areas that would be covered with this ordinance as it's proposed to us tonight. Is that correct?
Smoking tobacco, that's correct.
Thank you.
What about the use of edibles?
Well, that's what we're not, that is one of the questions that brought this kind of to the front, you know, that we wanted to make sure that we covered all bases of cannabis consumption and use.
Member Jackson?
Yeah, I think the ordinance actually says smoking tobacco and vaping. It does not include marijuana or other kind of smoke.
The ordinance that's already in place.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah, so this is different. The idea is no smoking in public, and that's what the signs say, but the ordinance itself does mention, does specifically state tobacco.
Thank you, that's appropriate clarification.
If those cover hemp edibles.
This is the proposed.
Yes, I was asking about the existing.
Existing is tobacco.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Is there a motion regarding the adoption of ordinance 2023-12 concerning the use of cannabis and hemp in public places?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves the adoption of ordinance 2023-12 concerning the use of cannabis and hemp in public places. Member Pierce seconds further discussion?
I will just.
Yes, Member Agnew?
Thank you. So I just want to reiterate that I think I agree that I want to see some type of ordinance on the books that prohibits smoking of hemp products and cannabis in public. The part that really does concern me about this is, how do we enforce the edibles component to it, particularly, like, you think of gummy bears, right? Someone's eaten gummy bears, like, is someone going to come and test it? Or, there's so many questions that I have about that phase of it, and I still have some of the discussion points that I think were really good last time about how are we messaging it, are still on my mind. So I am not comfortable with this ordinance as it is today. And so I'm noodling in my mind an amendment, and so I am thinking out loud and was not as prepared with how I would amend it, but I move to strike the pieces related to edibles from this ordinance.
Let me look at that.
So what I'm trying to do is make it specific to smoking.
So you would allow, would you, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would you allow the beverages in the parks? That's in the definition of edible, or the hemp beverages.
And is the issue enforceable?
Well, we have, yeah, I think we talked about this last time. We have other ordinances that have enforcement, or they're driven, they're complaint-driven ordinances, I'll put it that way, you know? You're parking overnight in the middle of winter on the street for more than six hours, nobody does anything about it unless a neighbor calls, so this is kind of in that same category.
Yeah, and I think that's a good clarification, Member Pierce, and I think my response to that is, this was, in a lot of ways, right, it was legalized in Minnesota. And so I don't understand, I understand it when we talk about it being, smoking affects other people, and it's that type of a nuisance. It's why we don't allow smoking of tobacco in public places today. So yes, I think it's more of, I don't understand why we would then do this at the city level when it's been approved at the state level.
Member Pierce?
With the, so just adding on to that, I, so that argument actually makes sense to me. My concern is, when people are under the influence of these substances, what happens then? And so I feel like if someone was pulled over and they're under the influence, whether it's alcohol or cannabis, that's my question. So when it's cannabis, how will we know that? And then if they are, then we should be able to prosecute accordingly. The interesting part about that, though, is I wonder if it is just the smell is what's dictating, dictating that. If it's just an edible, I don't know, you wouldn't really know if it's cannabis, or even if it's a beverage, because you wouldn't, you can't smell that.
Member Risher?
This is kind of making me think of when I toured McGill with my daughter, and we were on the American tour in Canada, and they were saying, and it's great, you can have picnics with bottles of wine, you know, and all the kids from the US were like, cool, you know? But I think by making the edibles, the beverages, something that is allowed in public parks, it means that you can very openly do that. And I think at this point, that would be opening a big can of worms, and I think there's a lot of logic to including the edibles along with the smoking. And also, I know when I looked at the legislation, it said that you cannot consume cannabis in front of underage children, you know, so that adds another element as well. So I see the logic of saying, we need to do this all across the board, even though I think people respond to the smell the most, but I do not have a disconnect with edibles and the smokables.
Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I remember a time when public parks were filled with people doing drugs. When I was a kid, Walnut Park in Des Moines was filled with hippies doing drugs. And it wasn't necessarily the smell of the smoke that made that a public nuisance. And that's when these kinds of ordinances were passed to keep drugs and drinking out of public parks, because people abused their ability to do that. And I guess I'm just really old-fashioned, I don't ever want to go back to those days, because it was pretty gross, and that's my motivation. So, I don't want drinking in parks, I don't want THC in parks, because I just remember those days and it was pretty bad.
I just think saying that, I agree with what you're saying, but in practice, with an edible or a beverage in the park, I don't know how we, I just don't know how we manage that. And so, we could say that in the ordinance all we want to, but there's no way we're going to know if somebody's in the park eating cannabis gummies or drinking a cannabis beverage, if there's no smell to it, and if there's no, they're not acting under the influence of it. And so I'm really just kind of six of one, half does not the other. I can understand that as well, but I just, I don't think anybody's going to complain about it either. It's not like leaving a trash bin out for three days beyond pickup. And so then you have to ask the question, well, if that's the case, what's the point in putting it in there? So that's.
Doesn't the use lead to the behavior that you don't like? By saying, by saying, you can go ahead and chew all the gummies you want, drink all the beverages you want that are laden with, what is it, THC in the park, but once you reach the point where you're stumbling around and you're publicly intoxicated, we'll say, you've really set that opportunity up for people to be able to do that by saying, yeah, it's okay if you do that, but then once you cross over and become publicly intoxicated, if you will, then we're going to do something about it, or somebody calls. So I mean, to me, I'm in the camp with my colleagues down here to the left of me here, that for the time being, because though marijuana's been around forever, we don't know how to regulate it really yet as a city and how to deal with it. And this is a chance for us to kind of get ahead of it a little bit until we And, and this is a chance for us to kind of get ahead of it a little bit until we know what we're doing, and I just think it's a safer, more pragmatic, cautious sort of approach.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I think your conversation at the, at the diocese tonight is a good indicator about why we would like to have you adopt this ordinance as, as presented. I, I can see, I can see some possible discussion points where we may want to allow THC consumption in parks, maybe at a wedding that we might be hosting at the golf course, or, or something like that, but, but before we open that up and then have to close it down, we'd like to have more discussion with you as a council, and probably staff, and maybe even the community, to arrive at some recommendations for you. So that's, that's what our motivation is, we just haven't had sufficient time. There's also a lot of discussion going on in other communities, and I think we can learn from, from what's happening there, too.
Can I follow on with another question? We mentioned public intoxication. Do we have ordinances on the books today about public intoxication?
Public intoxication from, from alcohol?
Intoxication.
Intoxication, yeah, true. Lieutenant?
It's more of a, if we come across somebody who has reached a level where they're unable to care for themselves, and they have no one else that can take care of them, then we have things we can do, we can take them places, but for just being intoxicated in public, that's, you know, unless they're causing a disturbance.
Yeah, I was going to say, or if they're visually, right, if they're causing a disturbance.
Right, something disorderly, so then we will get involved.
Thank you.
So we don't, we don't let people drink and become publicly intoxicated in a public park. You can't drink alcoholic beverages in a park.
But I, I think the same argument could be made, that if one really wanted to drink an alcoholic beverage in a park, one could surreptitiously do that and get away with it, you know? So it, do we, if we're going to go down this path, is it like, okay, then you can drink in the park, too? I mean, that doesn't seem logical.
I mean, all of our laws have a strong reliance on, on voluntary compliance, I mean, that's just, that's a function of our system.
Yeah, I don't think anybody is saying we should just allow all these things in the park. That's not the, that's not what I'm, I'm saying at all. But there's, as we think about, just in this particular case, I think maybe an overarching view of substances that can cause, right, intoxication, level of intoxication, or what have you, then that would cover multiple substances or something like that, I think would, that would make a lot more sense to me than trying to, to knock off each of these individually. But, but if your intent is to have this approved so that we can continue to learn more about it and refine it as we go, I, I'm okay with that as well.
You know, those are good discussions. Have you got any follow-on?
Just as a point of clarification, I have a half-baked motion on the table.
You have, you have a motion, yeah, that's right.
That no one seconded, so we should probably make a decision on that one.
All right, yeah, then we're back to the main motion, which does have a second. The amendment, the motion to amend failed for lack of a second. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-12 concerning the use of cannabis and hemp in public and grant second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves, Member Risher seconds, the motion is stated with regard to ordinance 2023-12. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Carried. And now we are on to the Macy's Home site, and Director Teague has some information for us with regard to whether or not we needed an environmental impact statement over at the Macy's site.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. I will just do a quick introduction. So, as mentioned, this is the, the Macy's Furniture site. The sketch plan that was reviewed rose to the level, level of needing an environmental assessment worksheet. The city hired WSB Andy Moffett to do that study for us, it was paid for by the developer, and she is here to go through the findings of the EAW and make a recommendation that an EIS is not needed for this project. So with that, I'll, I'll introduce Andy Moffett from WSB.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council, happy to be here tonight. I have just a short overview, for those of you who are new to EAWs or environmental assessment worksheets, an overview of the process, and what we found. Am I just clicking this to move forward?
Yes. Or roll it.
Got it. Just a few acronyms for the council and any members of the public. An EAW, it's an environmental assessment worksheet, it is a state environmental review document. An EIS is an environmental impact statement, so it's a much larger, much more comprehensive review. Those can be things like if the U.S. Bank Stadium would trigger those kinds of things, they're very large projects. An RGU is the responsible government unit, in this case, that is the City of Edina, and the Environmental Quality Board, EQB, promulgates rules related to environmental review. So, and the EAW, it's a standard 22 questions, and regarding environmental and infrastructure impacts for a development, and the purpose, again, is to determine if that environmental impact statement is needed. It determines if significant environment, environmental impact that can't be addressed by permitting, and it also informs future permitting, but it is important to note, it does not approve or deny a project, it is simply a review process. The former Macy's site, was I done?
I just wanted to let you know that this isn't an intimidation tactic.
I fully understand, I fully understand being on my own city council for a while in my city, so.
You're a friendly audience, so you.
Amanda Tartt, EAW, through the rules, was required for the, for the, the building of the proposed, the proposed redevelopment on the Macy's site. As I said, the city is the RGU, and we, with, along with the city, completed the environmental assessment worksheet that gets distributed for a required 30-day comment, and the 30-day comment was from June 6th through July 6th. RGU then responds to those comments, and that is in your packet along with initial EAW, and what we have before you tonight is the determination on whether there's a need for an environmental impact statement. Looking at the proposed redevelopment of the Macy's site, it does include demolition of the existing building, and then construction anticipated, proposed of 300,000 square feet of office mixed-use, and 460 multifamily residential units in four buildings. There's connection to city sewer and water, the anticipated underground stormwater management, as well as pedestrian connections to the surrounding area. The project will need to meet the guidelines of the city's comprehensive plan, as well as your Greater Southdale District Plan. The city's infrastructure for water and sewer does have capacity, it would, again, be further reviewed when and if a development plan comes through. There is some sewer that might, would need to be relocated within the development, redevelopment as well. Stormwater will need to meet both state and local requirements from the City of Edina, as well as Nine Mill Creek Watershed District, and they are looking at primarily underground storage treatment system. The traffic study was completed, the site is on Metro Transit line. The traffic itself will generate about 50, 300 daily trips, and looking at it, it is not anticipated to have a significant impact on traffic in the area, it's already a very well-developed area, and so there wasn't any major concerns associated with traffic. Turning movements did slow down a little bit, but there was plenty of space within those turn lanes for that traffic. The plan that was reviewed, there's connections for bicycles and pedestrians, a connection to Nine Mill Creek Trail that the city has been in, working with Three Rivers Park District on, connections to Centennial Lakes Promenade, and other connections on France. So, before you tonight, there's a, in the packet, findings of fact and conclusions, that is a required document as part of this, it gets developed after the EAW and through the public review. That document gets put together, is our opinion, from doing this work, that the EAW has provided information enough to inform permitting, that there are not any significant environmental impacts that cannot be addressed through permitting, the things, the questions that came up can be addressed through the city's permitting process in the future. And there before you is a recommendation to adopt a resolution for the negative declaration of need on the EIS for the former Macy's site redevelopment. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council members? From Ms. Moffett, anybody?
I have one.
Yes, Member Agnew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you, you mentioned this upfront, why this process was triggered, but if you could just go into that a little bit more to understand the uniqueness of this site, and why that has led to this being needed, particularly because what I see, right, it talks about the mixed-use nature of it, and I know that we are not required to go through this extensive of a process for every mixed-use site, so if you could just speak to that again, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, there are specific triggers, several triggers in state rule when an EAW is required. And for, for, if it's a residential, if there's industrial, if there's commercial, there's a trigger based on square footage and on number of units. And the exact number right now, what that trigger is for an EAW is escaping me, but this one did, between the office use, the mixed-use, and the residential use, it is above the threshold to trigger an environmental assessment, assessment worksheet is below the required threshold for an environmental impact statement. So because of the number of housing units combined with the square footage of the, of the office space, that is what triggered the mandatory environmental assessment worksheet. And I know when city staff receives development plans, they look at those triggers to determine whether something is required, and that is what initiated this, the EAW that went out for public comment.
Wonderful, thank you. And as I was reading through the materials, and this is the first time I've seen one of these at, as a city council member, so thank you for my questions. There were specific details about the potential proposed project, and this is prior to us seeing an official proposed project. So when there's an element in there, I think it said that there were 25 trees on the property, and in this assessment, it showed all 25 trees would be removed and replaced. And so when, when we see things like that in this evaluation, tell me how we're supposed to think about that. Are those decisions that are like, for sure, already in stone, or are we just saying almost, what's the extreme that we could go towards, and this is the assessment based on some of those extremes?
So the EAW, again, this, it's a high-level concept plan, and, and many times, some of these will sometimes go together in the similar timing. The timing on this one didn't work out such that you would have a more robust development plan to review. But again, this is looking at a high-level concept plan, the actual details, you know, that can get into permitting, and the city does have permitting and ordinances related to tree replacement and, and tree removal. And so what the EAW simply says is, based on the information that we have today on a high-level concept plan, this is what we think it is showing, and we will include that as a discussion. Moving forward, as the development moves forward, they, they may not, and they may look at development and say, "Oh, we don't need to remove those trees," or maybe we do, but let's, you know, look at maybe kind of the worst-case scenario as related to this, but still, it is a permitting function that would later come before the city council, about what is that site layout and that landscaping plan actually look at. So you are not tied or bound to any of this, it was simply a, this is what the concept plan appears to show, and here's the impacts.
Thank you. And if the concept plan then changed dramatically from what it is that you reviewed, would you then need to re-review, or what does that staging look like?
The city as the responsible government unit is charged with determining if the item that comes before you is significantly different than what was reviewed. And in order for it to be significantly different, you would be looking at, are there significant more impacts? Is there suddenly another 100,000, you know, is it 400,000 square feet? Is, are there very many more buildings? So the city would determine, is it a more significant impact above and beyond than what was already reviewed, to determine if a new EAW was needed.
Thank you so much.
Okay, questions for Ms. Moffett? Very good, thanks for being here with us this evening.
Yes.
All right, Director Teague, thanks for that. Was there anything else that you wanted to add?
Nothing else for me.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-54, negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement for the Macy's Home Store site at 7235 France Avenue South?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves, the motion is stated, Member Pierce seconds, the motion is stated. Any further discussion? Yes, Member Risher.
Just one, I, I did want to note that it was really interesting to read about the animals that were located in the area that I had no idea could be connected to Edina, the northern long-eared bat, the tri-colored bat, the rusty-patched bumblebee, and the blending turtle. Although, this particular site does not provide actual habitat for it, but it did make me think, there's potential, and it would be great to encourage habitat that could support animals that are nearby. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, adopting Resolution 2023-54, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Thanks, Ms. Moffett.
Thank you.
And now we are back to discussion about potentially increasing utility franchise fees with CenterPoint Energy and Xcel Energy to accomplish some of the things that we want to get accomplished in Edina, and Director Milner is back with us on this matter. Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Yes, we'll have a continuation of the, the conversation we had at the last council meeting. So, we discussed at the last one about a proposal to raise the franchise fees, so I'll summarize some of those things we discussed last time with the official proposal, and the two ordinances we'd like to grant first reading this evening. So, history of the fees, 2012, we started collecting those fees for the pedestrian and cyclist safety fund. 2016, we added the conservation and sustainability fund. It's part of the ETC's 2022 work plan. They had an item that said, "Review and recommend changes to the PACS funding policy." They provided an update to you on March 7th of this year, and they recommended increasing those fees to increase the rate of the PACS projects, so to go from a estimated 40 years to 20 years. And then staff was in front of you late last year on the streetlight situation, where we have, we're underfunded on the streetlights, so we came up with a hybrid plan to convert certain lighting systems back to leased with Xcel, and then take ownership of those high-priority areas, and do that over a 25-year transition, and we need additional budget to do so. So we also had questions from last meeting that I was going to answer, so one of those is Hopkins, what are they doing with franchise fees? So I reached out, and so did City Manager Neal, and they have no changes yet. They are having feedback tonight at their council meeting to see if they should bring back an ordinance in September. What was, what was, staff was bringing their council tonight was a change in the annual contribution between residential and those other property classes. So ETC had a similar comment, so if you look at the chart on the right, today, in this example, this is our example, 61% is blue, which is the revenue from residential properties. They're suggesting to lower that amount and increase the rates on their other property classes much higher than the residential classes with their next review of the fees, but all the residentials would have the same fee, so there isn't any changes amongst the actual residential. It is a flat fee over all residential properties. That's what Hopkins is considering, is just changing that makeup of where the revenue comes from. So our proposal in front of you this evening is to raise those rates approximately 22% in 2024, and then we would come back in '26 and '28 to see, to consider future increases. in 2024, and then we would come back in '26 and '28 to see, to consider future increases. Today, CenterPoint Energy, CPE, and Xcel Energy, this middle column, the fees on a residential customer per month is $2.90 for each one of those. We're recommending that gets increased to $3.55 per month on each utility. For a total fee for a residential customer, $7.10. And this increase of 22% would apply to all the property classes, and I'll show you what those are. And again, the utility requires a review and approval each time, and they are supporting this current increase in the 2024 timeframe. That would generate this revenue that's highlighted for 2024. We have a roughly $600,000 increase in the revenue. That would be spread between the PACS, the CAS, and then $300,000 that first year for street lighting to start that transition on that system. So this was another question from last time. What are those other property classes? So we noted that the residential is really the one that we look at and consider. There's the current rate, the effective rate for CenterPoint Energy, the top kind of table, and they have the majority of the customers and the majority of their meters are residential. So there's 16,244 as of a few weeks ago, and I got the updated numbers. Then you can see Firm A, Firm B, Firm C, and the other classes that they consider for their meters. I don't know what all those different terms mean, but they have approximately 1,500 other meter classes in town, and that's where those additional different rates would be applied. And then the same thing for Xcel. The majority of their customers are residential at 22,069, with those other different meter classes identified in those other three rows. So the results, we asked, what happens if we do this? So this is the results if we increase those fees. So we would decrease that implementation rate of the bike and ped master plan from 40 years to 33 years if we made those incremental changes up to the year 2028. We'd increase the rate of actions in the climate action plan. We weren't able to give you a specific number of years because there's just so many actions in there, and we're still working through those. And then the streetlight system, our current budget today allows us to do about 20 lights per year. We would be, after that 2028 rate, we could do approximately 50 lights per year in that transition. And I'd note that lighting systems are really tied to safety with the better visibility in intersections for pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. So if we can't keep the lights on, then there's a safety issue there, so. And then at the end of the 25 years of that conversion, we do see that there probably could be a budget reduction. We were collecting those revenues. We are estimating about 50% of that revenue that would be dedicated to street lighting could be now dedicated to some other initiative at the city at that time in 25 years. So we're recommending grant the first reading tonight of ordinance 2023-16 with CenterPoint Energy and 2023-17 with Xcel Energy. And I stand for any questions.
Questions for, yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, does this ordinance require us to split this between PACS and CAS, or is that an internal?
That's totally internal. That was a recommendation from staff to, because we heard from the ETC, wanted a little bit on the PACS. We knew street lighting was a major initiative, and CAS could also use a little boost in revenue. So strictly a staff recommendation, and you could change that.
Yeah. So I'm totally in favor of doing this. I'll say the number one thing I've heard from the climate action plan is to reduce vehicle miles traveled. So as far as I can tell, putting in the sidewalks and bike, and filling out the pedestrian bike plan, it would be my top priority. So I will vote in favor of the franchise fees, but without a list from the climate action plan, to me, making it a walkable, bikeable city is probably the top priority as far as what our funding should go. So I would put it all into the PACS to be reviewed, you know, five years, six years, to see where we're at. But I really think building out those sidewalks is the top priority for these funds and the lighting.
Sure.
So, thanks.
So at some point in time, you'd like to have a conversation about allocation?
Yeah.
But not tonight?
Right.
Yeah, okay, good.
I was just going to say that's fair because I don't necessarily agree with that. But if we're going to discuss the allocation, then that's fine.
We would do that probably more appropriate in a budget setting, I think, and we can share some ideas with you on that.
Just to address the issue tonight of whether or not we want to raise the franchise fees, and we've gotten suggestions on how it can be done, or how it could be allocated. Other questions for Director Milner? Member Risher?
I do have to say that I, if we could connect this to residential use, that would make me feel a lot better, and just thinking about the range of, you know, energy consumption that happens, and you've got, you know, a small rental unit and a large home, there's a vast difference right there. And I wish there was a way to make this a little bit more equitable, but it kind of sounds like, I don't know.
You mean based on like consumption?
Right.
Okay.
Energy use, which I believe it was resident, or Nora Davis brought that up tonight, too. I think she mentioned that would be a good idea.
Manager Neil?
I think it is, it is something that we can take a look at between now and the next time that we bring these back to you for a subsequent increase. That'll be something that Mr. Milner and I will remember to do.
Sure. This is a first reading basis, so at least it was what's proposed tonight. Anybody else?
A small, small question. You mentioned on one of the slides that we would estimate growing to being able to replace 50 lights per year. What's the estimated total number of lights that we have?
We need 25 years to replace all the system for about 2,500 lights.
So 50 times 25, so?
7,37,000.
Yeah, 12,50. Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-16 and 2023-17 to increase utility franchise fees as recommended by staff with CenterPoint Energy and Xcel Energy and grant first reading to those two ordinances?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right. We got the manager's comments 25 minutes early.
I'm ready. Keep. Ready?
Yep, ready.
Just a couple of things tonight. First, draw your attention to the progress portal. That's something we've mentioned in last week's Friday report and also on tonight's agenda. The progress portal gives you a chance to see kind of where we are at any time during the year in terms of implementing our goals, right? So if you want to know where we are in our recent equity plan, or our climate action plan, or our advisory commission work plans, this is a great place to find that. There's some nice graphics, it's easy to read, easy to internalize. You can find it on our city webpage, at the city goals page, and our communications director told me she's going to find some more places to link it up to, but it's something that we're proud of. In terms of something else that's on for tonight, our quarterly financial report is also on tonight's agenda for the council. We are reporting up through the second quarter of 2023. So far, general fund revenues are coming in right at where they, where we expect them to be, about 49% halfway through the year. Property taxes coming in are strong, licenses and permits are strong, ambulance fees are about double, 2.4 million compared to 1.3 million on year-to-date from last year. Our interest income on investments are also strong this year. General fund expenses are at 47%, a little less than what we would expect them to be halfway through the year. The Aquatic Center is one we keep an eye on at this time of year as the financial picture begins to get clearer. It's a very quick financial picture when you think of a season that starts on June 8th and is over on August 20th on Sunday. But their cost recovery so far this year is 98% of their expenses, which is really strong for a public pool. Utility fund, we are beginning to push some more conservation measures in the community, and their cost recovery right now is, cost recovery for that fund's at 114%. So that's pretty strong as well. Just some encouragement, I've mentioned this before in a Friday report, but the August 22nd, August 22nd, there's a special session of the school board to see the presentation from Hazel Reinhardt on student demography and how its connection to housing happens in Edina. We, this is a, an update on a study that we did with Hazel back in 2019. It was very fascinating, and hope council members are eligible to, or are able to come that night. We are advertising that as a public meeting of the council just to cover the open meetings issues. Finally, we had a speaker tonight about panhandling, and this is an interesting topic because I'm hearing about it also from, from all of my city manager colleagues in the Twin Cities. Such an increase in panhandling, a lot of public concern about panhandling. What we can tell you is that as long as panhandlers are not obstructing traffic or threatening people, there really isn't a lot we can do about it from a law enforcement standpoint. The courts and the prosecution system is just not going to, is not going to help us in that regard. So there was a picture shown tonight where people were camped out on a median. I consider that to be a little different than maybe at the top of an exit ramp or other, or other spots where you might encounter panhandlers. So we will talk to the police department about that. But generally, if that's where they are and they're not obstructing traffic, we're, we do stop, our officers do stop and check in with them, offer them services on a pretty frequent basis. But aside from that, that's what we're going to be able to do. And that's what I'm hearing from my colleagues, that they're happening in their cities as well. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Manager Neil, have any questions? Anybody budget-related? Does the, my reading is right that the liquor store year-to-date 2023 is down 128,000?
I'm not there right at the moment. It could be. You know, one of the things that-
Net income, net income is a loss actually of 128,000?
Well, it may be just behind, behind projections at the end of the second quarter. Franchise fees, for example, at the end of the second quarter are only at 25% of what we expect them to be, and it's because we've just, we've not received the second quarter payments from the utilities. So sometimes it's just a matter of timing.
The golf course is extraordinary year-to-date. It's already netted 600,000 in income.
It's, they're having an extraordinary year. They really are.
Any questions for Manager Neil? All right. Member Agnew? Council comments?
None from me tonight. Thank you.
Member Pierce?
I had, I had two comments. One, I've had really good conversations with residents over the last, I don't know, we'll call it four weeks. And so I just wanted to take the opportunity to just express when we're out talking to concerned residents and like we're able to comment particular issues with different perspectives, but we're doing it in a respectful and thoughtful way. Like that really does kind of draw, that draws me in. And I just wanted to say, I've had a couple of those in particular that I thought were really good. And so the more we can advocate for people engaging in the process in a constructive way, I think we do end up with better outcomes. And then the second one was kind of related to the progress portal updates. I've just had this thought, we do this in some areas, but I think it might be interesting or good for us to think about from a practice standpoint, when we take decisions as a council, that after a period of time, we actually go back and we see what the outcome of those decisions were. And it could be, I probably wouldn't do randomly choosing things, but I think if, if, Manager Neil, if you could think about maybe some areas where it might make sense for us to do that, and maybe we can discuss that as a group, and then do a little, I'll call it a little field trip to go, all right, here's what we decided to do on this case, well, this is what the outcome was. I think we could learn from that, and I think the community would appreciate seeing us incorporating a process that's, you know, kind of a little bit of a Six Sigma, if you will, where we're learning from decisions that we've made and then being able to bring in some of that thinking to future decisions as well. So that's it.
Good. Thank you. Member Jackson? Which way was I going here?
So, thank you. I had a really interesting conversation with Director Milner and his staff and the consultants about water down in the Cahill District. And we talked really extensively about stormwater and how Ross Bittner's already working with Nine Mile Creek to sort of understand the flow of stormwater and the risks near term and long term. And that was really a useful conversation, and I really appreciate that. In the course of the conversation, we did talk about the sewer service there, and I just wanted to share with my colleagues here in a public meeting, something that I learned, and that the sewer connection that was talked about in the Cahill District is really only for that Cahill District. It does not extend all the way up to the northwest. So the sewer connection for those businesses that are along Lincoln Drive, the solution would be to go underneath and connect with Minnetoka, but all those single-family residences that are in Parkwood Knolls and that environs do not have the sewer capacity for much greater density. And I know we're looking at terms of what can we do about housing and things like that, but I just wanted to share that fact with you that I learned. So if we're looking at adding density in the northwest quadrant, the sewer capacity is a very serious issue, and we're talking 10, 12 million dollars minimum to expand the capacity of that sewers. So I don't know if that'll be useful, but I wanted to share that fact with you. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Member Risher?
I believe this is the last council meeting of the summer that school will have started when we gather again. And so I just want to note that and give an extra push for really keeping with the speed limits that we have. And I was driving, this was when I was running for city council, and admittedly, that made me really pay attention to the speed limit, and I was going the speed limit. And I was on Wooddale, and a kid, it was just like out of one of those movies, came out on little roller blades, he was, had a hockey stick, and he was chasing a tennis ball, and he went right in front of my car. And I was going the speed limit, and nothing bad happened. I almost, I mean, had a huge adrenaline rush, but a lot is happening now, and I'm seeing kids running for team sports and all of that already, they're out and about. So really, look at those signs, follow the speed limit, and, you know, make sure that we're part of being the safe street solution.
But the school, the school will not be starting for you.
It won't, but I thought about maybe having an office hour as a council person, like in a library or something. Anyway, it's an idea I'm kicking up.
Yeah. All right. Quickly for me, just a couple of things, but a TAB meeting tomorrow, and then we talked to last meeting about Michael Braun, who worked for the city, passing away as a result of that bee sting. And Director Benarott and I and others, they were all at church at Beth Lamb Uthren on Lyndale, 42nd and Lyndale, I think it is. It was just packed. I'm sure there were well over 300 people there. And so it was interesting to hear about Michael from his friends, from his family, his brother-in-law calling him interesting and interested, how funny was his renowned sort of frugality, his trip planning, a couple of his frugality, looking for the best way to, you know, take an ocean voyage and get the 16-drink-a-day package, and telling, you know, all his buddies about the good deals to be had. And then his, just his passion around love of family and friends, I think was really nice to hear. And- And beautiful music, everything about it was really quite a send-off. So our thoughts are with his wife Connie and kids. Again, I state that on behalf of the city, all the residents of our community from Michael Braun. So a great, a great send-off into a wonderful life, that he lived well. And that's it for me. Anybody else? Cause?
Lights are on. I've been on for that cruiser. I don't know if there's an issue that we should know about.
There's a police car that's got, the lights are going on it.
You just gotta know where else to park.
Oh, he's been that way for 30 minutes or so?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Remember, Jackson moves, we adjourn.
Second, second.
Anybody else? Is this going to fail for the lack of a sound? Remember, Pierce seconds finally. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Stand adjourned.